Good afternoon. I'm Doug Shipman, Atlanta City Council President, calling to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Atlanta City Council. Today is September 15th, and I would like to invite the clerk to call the opening roll.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of council. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large. Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Dozier, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Liliana Bactieri, District Five. Councilmember Alex Wong, District Six.
Present.
Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District Eight.
Present.
Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District Nine. Councilmember Andrea Elboon, District Ten. Councilmember Morrissey Koller Overstreet, District Eleven. Councilmember Antonia Lewis, District Twelve. Mr. President, we do have a quorum of members present.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if there are any additions or changes to the agenda, and if not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt. Move by Councilwoman Wong, seconded by Councilwoman Dozier, any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda. We can do this via unanimous consent without objection or objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent and the motion to adopt.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries. Next, we are honored to have with us Mr. Rajan Zed. He is the President of the Universal Society of Hinduism. He joins us today from Reno, Nevada, and I would invite him forward to give our invocation.
I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures some as old as 1500 BCE in Sanskrit and interpret in English. Will you all rise, please? Om. Bhur bhuvahas vahah, tath savitur varanam, bhargo devasya dimahi, diyo yoona prachodayat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya tamso ma jyotir gamya mriti or mamrata gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada sakta statham karyam karma samachara sakto hyacharan karma, paramapanoti purusha, karma ne vahisamsiddhi mastitajankaadeya, lokasangreha mevapi sampashankar tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navavatu saha nobhaktu saha viryan karbaba hai tjasvi navadita mastu ma vidvisha bhai. May we be protected together, may we be nourished together, may we work together with great vigor, may our study be enlightening, may no obstacle arise between us. Samaniva kuti samana hirdhyaniva samana mastu voh manu yathava susa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om.
Thank you. As we continue to be in a moment of reflection, I would ask if there are any remembrances from my colleagues to be recognized today. Councilmember Boone?
Thank you, Mr. President. We would like to extend condolences to the Trap City Cafe family, Trap City Museum, Grand Hustle Entertainment on the loss of a nightlife legend, Michael Anthony Taylor, who hailed from Atlanta from Washington DC. Michael worked with artists like Ililakuje, Busta Rhymes, Biggie Smalls, Case. He also was the number one promoter for Russell Simmons, Fat Farm, Baby Fat, and Def Jam artists. We offer condolences to the family of Michael Anthony Taylor, known as Mike Upscale, Little Big Mike. My colleague and I, Mr. Amos, celebrated his life last night at Trap City Cafe with over 400 citizens who came from far and near. His funeral will be held at the Jackson Memorial Baptist Church, September 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. condolences to the entire nightlife family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norwood?
Yes, I want to acknowledge that we are very saddened by the tragic accident of Benjamin Reiser, a student at Galloway School. He was at the intersection of Roswell Road and Laurel Forest Circle on a motorcycle and was killed tragically at that blind intersection. So please keep his family and friends in your prayers.
Thank you. Councilmember Overstreet?
Thank you. I just want to do a moment of silence for a dear family friend that we've lost, and his name was Isaac Thomas. He is known by many as Master Thomas. His daughter is a dear, dear friend of mine since we were in high school, and also his son, that's Chiquita and Bryant Thomas. And Mama Lily, I'm just sending love and strength her way as we celebrate his homegoing on Friday, but just want to do a moment of silence for Master Thomas.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos?
Yes, sir. Definitely want to ditto my colleague, Councilmember Boone, for Michael Taylor, someone that I met only a few years ago but has definitely become to call friend. So definitely want to do that. And then to my Vine City family, Wallace Dallas, someone I actually grew up with, a couple of years younger than me. Unfortunately, he transitioned last week, so I want to send our condolences to him. And then to another friend of mine whose grandfather passed, who actually cut hair on Edgewood Avenue up until he was 98 years old, Leslie Barber Shop. He transitioned at the tender age of 99, so definitely want to send our condolences out to the Leslie family as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember Hillis?
Thank you. Just asking that everyone keep a young man named Justin Monier, who was a dear friend and a former resident of my neighborhood Riverside. He was always involved in neighborhood events and meetings, and was an awesome person, someone who could hear his life from a mile away and would always fill the room with joy. Unfortunately, he was suffering from some issues the past few years of his life and was unfortunately involved in an incident with APD last week. So please keep his many friends across the city, especially those in the LGBTQ community and Riverside, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? For these and for those unnamed, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Without objection, we're going to take the first proclamation last today in order to allow some guests to be able to join us. So first, I would like to invite Councilmembers Boone and Bond forward, and all of those who are here in recognition of Dr. Henry J. Porter, a living legend, to join us up on the dais.
Well, all those, well, all those that are here to pay tribute and celebrate a living legend, Dr. Henry Porter, please come quickly. I see Morris Brown, Omega Sci-Fi, Southwest Atlanta, Allen Temple AME Church. Woo, look at this. Look at this. Let's give Dr. Porter a hand. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I am Andrea Boone. Today I am joined by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, and we are here to pay tribute and celebrate a living legend, the maestro of purpose, Dr. Henry Porter. We will now view a short video. Give us one moment. Can we start over? Give us one moment. Be patient with us. Give us one moment. What a great day in the city of Atlanta when we honor one of our own. There we go.
Why should I feel this love?
For more than eight decades, Dr. Henry Porter's captivating voice has been there, celebrating joyous occasions and community events, and helping to ease grief following the loss of loved ones.
I always knew that when I was growing up, that I wanted to be somebody, and I wanted to be something good and something meaningful.
This Atlanta father and grandfather says he can't remember a time when music wasn't there. His parents were devout believers who encouraged his musical talents. His father, Reverend R. H. Porter, began serving as the pastor of Allen Temple AME Church in 1948. It remains Dr. Porter's church home, the place where he honed his voice and pursued another passion.
I begged my daddy to play daddy's trumpet, and he bought me a trumpet. I became known at Dave T. Howard High School for playing my trumpet.
But a high school math teacher, Ms. Williams, lit a different spark, one that would accompany his enthusiasm for music.
She had a way that she could explain it to you, like she cared about you. So I said, well, I'll just be a math major, and I'll do my music on the side, and that's what I did.
After serving honorably in the Army, Porter returned home to teach math a little bit differently in Fulton County Schools, and later at his alma mater, Morris Brown College.
We had teens and parties in my class. Pay attention in class, and do your homework.
Porter imparted into young minds, all while continuing his music. For more than 500 weddings and funerals, Dr. Porter sang, never asking for a dime.
I believe that if God gives you a talent, you need to use it, and if you don't use it, you'll lose it.
When my mother-in-law died, I went to Dr. Porter and asked him, well, he sang at her funeral. He said, yes. So he sang at her funeral. So I said, what do we owe you? He said, you already paid me. So I asked him to sing. He'd just do it from the bottom of his heart. I said, man, this is amazing, man.
When Morris Brown College lost its accreditation, Dr. Porter remained, teaching for free, even adding plumbing and carpentry to his workload, anything to help the school that meant so much to him.
He's a special person, and you don't meet people like him every day.
On this day, Dr. Porter is putting both his vocal and trumpet playing skills to work. He's attending rehearsal with the Metropolitan Atlanta Community Band, an organization he's been a part of since its inception in 1968. Associate Director Vannable Moody is preparing the band for an event in November.
He was on the very first opera I did 25 years ago. Henry Porter never just starts singing. There's a message behind what he does. He's trying to inspire and uplift. You can't just sit there and not be moved, not be touched by this man's voice.
At the young age of 88, Dr. Porter remains sharp and filled with purpose, still sharing his voice, still encouraging everyone he encounters, spreading light and love.
Thank you to the Atlanta City Council staff that put that wonderful, wonderful, inspiring video together. Today in the city of Atlanta, we have members of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, the Nature Girls, David T. Howard Alumni Association, Allen Temple AME Church, and so many Southwest and Northwest Atlanta seniors are here. Thank you to Morris Brown College. Thank you to Gala Smith Mitchell and Camille Smith Ziegler for your hard and dedicated work. Let's give everyone a hand. And now we will have remarks by our new pastor from Allen Temple AME Church.
Dr. Ephraim.
Dr. Ephraim.
Thank you. Praise the Lord, everybody. What a blessing it is to be able to stand here to celebrate one Henry Jefferson Porter. Amen, somebody. He remains such a bright light in this community. It is evidenced by those who have gathered here from all walks of life, ages. We are here simply because he has made a difference as an educator, as a brother, as a father. He has made a difference as a Christian man all, amen. And because he has made a difference, we are so glad that you took the time to celebrate him, to allow him to smell his roses and receive his roses while he is yet still alive. And so we are so grateful that we have this honor to be able to stand here with you because you continue to make a difference in our lives. And until the Lord call you home, we gonna still be loving on you every single day. Amen.
A wonderful Southwest Atlanta legend, retired APD officer, Omega Sci-Fi, Chuckie Wilson.
Good afternoon. I did not know I was going to be called upon to do this, but I could not think of a better person that I would like to come forward and say something about. Brother Porter was somebody that I met in Omega in 1968 when I became a member. And he has traveled this country with me year after year, going to different types of meetings and so forth concerning the business of Omega. He is such a caring person that I know all of you are well familiar with. He traveled all the way to Petersburg, Virginia to sing at my mother's funeral. He traveled back again to sing at my father's funeral. He traveled to Tallahassee, Florida to sing at my wife's mother's funeral, at my wife's daddy's funeral. All of this and never asked for a dime, a true brother in the spirit of Omega Sci-Fi. And I say this, you know, everybody knows about him being a math teacher. And they asked Henry one time, why was he so successful in being a math teacher? And the student, his name was John, Porter told me this story, asked, had told his father that the reason why he was so good in Henry's class was because Henry had this picture of somebody hanging on the wall on this plus sign. Some of you might know what that plus sign was. And he said, when he saw that person hanging on that plus sign, he knew that Mr. Porter wasn't taking nothing off of nobody. Congratulations, Brother Porter. Well.
Our next speaker is none other than Solomon Brannon, our hero, our professional retired NFL player. His entire family is here with him. They were with us this morning. Where's Jean and Kim? Brannon Sports, everybody. Brannon Sports. Solomon Brannon. Solomon Brannon.
Good afternoon. My name is Solomon Brannon, and this is Henry Porter Day. I went to Henry Porter three years ago.
I went to Henry Porter three years ago and asked him, "Mr. Porter?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "Can we honor you for all the things you've done?" He said, looked at me. He said, "If you think enough to honor me, I think enough to let you do it." So I told him. I said, "Well, we want you involved with it also." I said, "I gotta get a committee together first." So I was able to get a committee together, some people who want to help. And I call him the Renegade Man. Number one, he's a joker. He's a professional teacher. He's a singer. He's a doctor. So what is it? He's not. And so I want everybody to know he's sang at over 700 funerals. And he's never received a penny. If you write him a check, he'll give you that check back. So Henry Porter is like a brother to me, and I will always cherish the things he's done. And I say, "Let me give you your flowers while you're alive." So thank you, Mr. Porter.
Dr. Porter, the next speaker is your son, Henry Porter.
I just wanted to take the time to say thank you all for taking the time to honor my father, Henry Jefferson Porter, Sr. I put the emphasis on senior because I am his namesake. I am Henry Jefferson Porter II. And as long as I've been alive, I've not been able to forget that. Everywhere that I go, any room that I walk into, once I tell people my name, they say, "Are you Brother Porter? Are you Mr. Porter or Dr. Porter?" Yep, that's my dad. I am he. But it's a great honor to be able to have that type of legacy to live up to. You set the goals extremely high for us to run after, myself. And I'm speaking, I know I took a selfish moment to talk about my name, but I'm speaking on behalf of my two sisters, Tiff and Leet, as well. You set the goals extremely high, and you set a standard for us. And it's amazing what you can do when you have a strong support system and a standard set for you. And I wanted to look at you in your eyes. I wanted to take the time to tell you how proud I am, how proud we are of you, and how much you mean to us. We love you.
Love you too.
And thank you.
I want to give these two sisters, let's give them a hand. Camille and Gaila, they are hard workers. Thank you, Dr. Thomas Gochet. We have our sheriff, our High Sheriff from DeKalb County. Let's ask her to come on up. Melanie, come on up. Sheriff Maddox, come on up. Another native of Atlanta.
I've been trying to get her to arrest me for years, but she won't. She won't do it.
And now, Sheriff, a lot of people forget that you are a native of Georgia. Peach, homegrown from Atlanta, Georgia. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for answering the call. Teresa Stanford, thank you as well. Dr. Gochet, Cecilia Torrance, and this wonderful, wonderful group of individuals who helped plan this. And we will be again on Friday, another big celebration. And now the High Sheriff of DeKalb County, Sheriff Melody Maddox.
Thank you so much, because I really appreciate this opportunity. Let me just say this. When I got to Morris Brown, and I'm gonna be just a moment of truth. I did not understand math, and I knew I needed my math in order to graduate. And I remember just crying. I said, "Dr. Porter, I'm not gonna graduate." He said, "Now, darling, you just dry your pretty little eyes. I'm gonna show you how you're gonna get through this math." And when he wrote this formula down for me, now I became a beast at it. I was like, "Well, why wasn't this explained to me a long time ago?" I'm a graduate, like she said, I'm a grady baby. Went to Brown High School, Morris Brown College, Bubbling Brown. I'm originally from here. But it took this man right here to help me understand math. And because of that, I do serve as the sheriff because you have to have numbers. You have to know numbers in order to balance a million, $100 million budget. And I want to thank you, Dr. Porter, for being so patient and kind with me. It's because of you that I hold this badge and the stars for you.
You're welcome, but I still want you to arrest me.
Sheriff, photo with you all, because you might have to leave. Let's get a photo right there. Just a tour of the photo. Step up, please, step up. And now for our official proclamation, the Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
You can clap for that. But in all seriousness, it is really an honor for us to honor Dr. Porter. If you have not seen enough from the video, you'll hear it in the litany within the proclamation. But if you have not heard this man's voice, you have not heard the voice of Atlanta. Amen? And we happen to be at the funeral for Dr. Poe on Saturday. And you actually sang the favorite song. I like to hear you sing, "The Impossible Dream." But if you're a man's man, you need to hear him sing "My Way." Amen to the man that hear that? Now, if you're a man and you have not heard Dr. Porter sing "My Way", originally done by Frank Sinatra, you haven't grown up yet. It is powerful, it is to the point, and it is really interesting that he is also was a math professor because music and mathematics are extricably linked. So it's just amazing the wondrous things that God does when he puts together people and a person like Dr. Porter. And to the proclamation in his hands, it will read in pertinent point, "Recognizing Dr. Henry Porter, a living legend, on his day here in the city of Atlanta, whereas the Morris Brown College Alumni Focus Group Incorporated is proud to present its premier..." What is this? Oh, I'm sorry. Whereas Dr. Henry J. Porter, affectionately known as the Maestro of Purpose, has dedicated more than eight decades to education, music, membership, and community service, inspiring generations through the dual passions of teaching and mathematics and uplifting spirits through song. And whereas Dr. Porter's journey began in Atlanta, Georgia, where he sang his first solo at the age of eight at St. Paul AME Church, excelled academically and musically at David T. Howard High School and earned a scholarship to Morris Brown College, graduating with honors in 1959 after serving as a distinguished student, choir soloist, and leader in Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas Dr. Porter's career as an educator included service as mathematics instructor, coach, athletic director, and principal in the Fulton County School System along with military service in the United States Army as a mathematical statistician, further cementing his lifelong commitment to discipline, excellence, and service. And whereas beyond the classroom, Dr. Porter's leadership flourished through his devotion to the Allen Temple AME Church, where he served as a trustee, treasurer, Sunday School Superintendent, and choir soloist, as well as through his sensitive service in Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity, where he has been honored multiple times as Omega Man of the Year, holding leadership roles at local, district, and international levels. And whereas we, the Members of Atlanta City Council and the citizens of the city of Atlanta, hereby proclaim this day as Dr. Henry Porter Day in our fair city. And witness thereof, we have sent our hand and have called the seal of the city of Atlanta to be here into effect. Congratulations.
Dr. Henry Porter Day in the city of Atlanta, Georgia. The next voice you will hear will be that of Dr. Henry Porter.
Hello. First, let me thank all of you for coming. You know, my baby daughter played a trick on me this morning. She called me on my phone, and I was talking. I said, "Baby, I'm sorry that you're not gonna be able to be with me at City Hall today." And then my doorbell rang, and there she was. And I appreciate my family. I love my family, my son, my two daughters. But I love all my friends. It's my family that you see here. And I chose teaching because I like people. I chose teaching because I like people. When I was drafted into the United States Army, I served on mainly civilian posting. And when my two years was up, they offered me a job working for the government as a civilian. And I said, "Well, you know, I like teaching. Let me go back and try teaching. If I don't like it, can I come and accept that offer?" They say, "Well, the offer will stay open for one year." Well, I got to South Fulton High School, and the rest is history. I taught. And then after I left South Fulton, I went to Westwood High School and I was an assistant there and taught. And I was a principal at Russell High School. And then when Russell merged with Tri-Cities, merged into Tri-Cities, I opened up Wilton Middle School. And then after a year at Wilton, I was tired and went to Morris Brown College. And I taught students. And I emphasized, I taught students. They say, "Mr. Porter, you teach math?" I say, "That's one of the things I taught my students." But the most important thing I tried to teach my students is that you must be responsible, you must be respectable, you must do all of those things because you can make it in life not knowing math, but you can't make it in life mistreating people. So what I'm gonna do now is give everybody in this room a math lesson. If you were to say, "Hey, baby, what's your phone number?" And she say, "404-229-2244." Well, if you dial 404, you won't get the number. I know what you mean. You really mean 404. And if you look at your phone right now, if you dial 404, you will be dialing 464 because the letter O is on the keyboard. I see somebody looking. But let me talk about that zero. See, the zero is a very important number. It's classified as an even integer. And if you start with zero and you go to the left of zero, then you have your negative one, negative two, negative three ellipsis. And if you start at zero and you go to the right, you have zero. We have 1, 2, 3, 4 ellipsis. And if you don't know what the ellipsis means, that means you just keep continuing once you have established a pattern. That's your first lesson. And then you need to understand that zero is an important number. If you have something in math that calls the identity property of zero, if you add zero to an add-in, your sum will always be identically that add-in. You have the zero law of multiplication. If you multiply zero times a number, your product will be zero. Now let me tell you how addition helps us in life. If you have negative things happening in your life and you add some more negative stuff to it, you're gonna get deeper into negative territory. But if you take a negative number and you add a positive number, then you can approach zero, and if that positive number larger than up, you'll get on the positive side of zero. So in life, when things go bad, we need to add positive things to them. That is your mathematic lesson for the day. And I want everybody's cell phone number so I can give, send you a test in the morning and see if you... In fact, I didn't even call my exam test. I called them parties. We had parties and Ts in my class. All right? So I'll send you. Now, let me talk about the music. It's been a part of my life, all my life. My father was an AME minister, and I got my president elder here. Thank you for being here. And former President Dr. Fisher, I'm thanking for being here. But I've been in AME all of my life. And I sang my first solo when I was nine years old. And I found a program with my name written in it. And they say, "Solo, Henry Porter, Swing Low Sweet Chariot." And let me tell you, when you play music on the piano, you have some white keys and you have some black keys. Now, if you just play all white keys, and that's all, you're limited. But if you include the black keys with the white keys and you put them in a certain order and make harmony, then that's life. That's life. What we need to do is people understand that no matter what a person is and what a person offers, if you put them together, their positive thing, then you can make music. So music is a very, very important part of my life. It's a very, very important part of my life. You're happy, you can have something. When you're sad, you can find something to make you feel better. So I thank you for honoring me this day. And it means the world to me. It really, 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 really does. And I will always be teaching until the day I die. Thank you so much for honoring me.
Next, we will have next we will have an official photo. And then we would like for everyone to move quickly to the reception area for a reception honoring Dr. Henry Porter on Henry Porter Day. Thank you for your attendance. Come on in, everyone. Come on in, everyone.
Everyone on the dais, please exit stage left. To the left, straight through that doorway. To the left, to the left, head to the reception, outside to the left. Straight through, just straight through, straight through. I was trying to send them out the door. They kept turning.
Will everyone move quickly to the reception? Shh, shh. Please move quickly to the reception area. Quickly to the reception area, to the left. Once you exit the atrium, to the reception area. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Norwood and all of those who are here in recognition of the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods to please join us on dais.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure this afternoon to recognize the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods. And this is the proclamation that Deborah, the Chair of the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods, is holding. Whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods was founded in 2008 as a nonprofit organization to provide a unified voice to address and protect the common interest and quality of life issues shared by all Buckhead neighborhoods. And whereas Buckhead is home to 43 officially designated neighborhoods, with many, many with their own neighborhood associations. And the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods serves as a coalition of 41 of these neighborhoods, representing more than 90% of Buckhead's 80,000 residents. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods also represents many residents of condominiums, townhomes, and apartments that fall outside Buckhead borders, neighborhood borders, ensuring that all Buckhead voices are heard and considered. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods provides a forum for discussion and advocacy on issues including education, transportation, traffic, community development, and government services through regularly scheduled meetings. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods represents communities within city council districts six, seven, eight, and nine, maintaining strong communication with council members to ensure neighborhood issues and concerns are understood and addressed. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods has consistently supported the recommendations of the city's neighborhood planning units on zoning, land use, licensing, and other planning issues, with Buckhead neighborhoods falling primarily within NPUs A, B, and C, and also extending into NPUs E and F. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods works in partnership with Buckhead's business organizations, including the Buckhead Coalition, the Buckhead Community Improvement District, Livable Buckhead, and the Buckhead Business Association. And whereas the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods has resolved issues on matters of critical importance, such as the preservation of Atlanta's single-family residential neighborhoods, land use and subdivision changes, protection of the tree canopy, public safety, and street and transportation improvements. And whereas most recently, the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods prepared a comprehensive list of more than 250 site-specific repairs and infrastructure improvements, complete with photographs, addresses, and descriptions, which was presented to City Hall as a roadmap for investment in Buckhead's future. And whereas the city of Atlanta is committed to establishing a timeline to advance these important projects for the benefit of Buckhead residents and the city as a whole. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby recognize and commend the Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods for its many years of dedicated service and advocacy on behalf of the residents of Buckhead, and expresses its gratitude for the council's enduring commitment to collaboration, community engagement, and the betterment of the city of Atlanta. Congratulations.
Okay. On behalf of the entire Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods, I want to thank you all for this great honor. This is wonderful. Eighteen years ago, after an NPU meeting, a small group of six individuals, Jim King, who was with us, and Kim Jensen, who is also with us, along with Yolanda Adrian, Gordon Surtin, Garth Peters, and Allison Adair, came together with the idea of creating an organization that would give Buckhead neighborhoods a stronger, more unified voice at City Hall. I don't think any of them imagined how successful that idea would become. Atlanta is made up of hundreds of amazing and unique neighborhoods across the 12 council districts. Every one of them has its own personality, its own strengths, its own sense of community. And together, they form the patchwork that makes Atlanta such a diverse and flourishing city. To me, neighborhoods represent not just geography, but community, culture, and history. And the individuals who step up to govern and protect them are the true warriors of our communities. That's the way I feel about the untold number of Buckhead Council volunteers some with us today, and the countless hours they have spent preserving the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Thank you to each one of those volunteers. Because of these volunteers, the Buckhead Council has helped our neighborhoods come together, allowing us to speak with one cohesive voice, which has served our community well. The Buckhead Council of Neighborhoods has also been an important part of my life for many, many years. I'll date myself. The first resolution I participated in called the district attorney, asked the district attorney to prosecute the educators involved in the APS cheating scandal a while ago. Since then, DCN has tackled key issues that matter to residents: transportation and traffic, public safety, the tree canopy, and protecting our single-family neighborhoods. And most recently, the pressing need for infrastructure repairs across Buckhead. We did deliver the list of 250 site-specific road hazards along with photos, and the City Hall made a commitment to address them all. This is just one example of how neighborhoods can help shape solutions by pinpointing problems at the source. I also want to take a moment to thank the Atlanta City Council for your partnership. Many of you have attended our meetings, including our council president and all of our at-large representatives. Mayor Dickens has spoken with us, and about every member of his cabinet has joined us at meetings as well. This kind of engagement matters because it helps ensure that neighborhoods and city leaders are working together, and we are partners in making sure our neighborhoods not only survive, but flourish. As we accept this proclamation, we do so to celebrate what has been accomplished, but also to recommit ourselves to the work ahead. Strong neighborhoods build strong cities, and together, we can ensure that Atlanta remains a place where every voice matters and every community thrives. So thank you so much.
And now, would anybody else like to say a few words? Okay, all right. We will take a picture.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmembers Dozier and Boone, and all of those who are here for the recognition of the 25th anniversary of Dr. Willie Clyde and Pathway Christian Ministries to please join us up here on the dais.
For all those that are here to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Dr. Willie Clyde and Pathway Christian Ministries. Congratulations. Thank you. Angela, y'all can come over, something come here. Right here, right here, right here, right. Help me place it. Terry Ross, where is he? Today, we are honored. I am joined by the Honorable Jason Dozier of District Four. We are honored to celebrate one of our pillars in southwest Atlanta, Dr. Willie Clyde. Dr. Clyde feeds the homeless, he takes care of our seniors, he comes out when we need him, he is boots on the ground. You can drive by his church and see him in action. We would like to thank our First Lady, Tracy Clyde, for all she does, and this wonderful family for sticking with us in the community. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed.
Thank Councilmember Boone. So I have the unique pleasure of representing Pathway Christian Ministries and the church community and congregation that Pastor Clyde has been leading for some time now. I got to know Pastor Clyde independently of his daughter, Angela. In fact, Pastor Clyde reached out to me in my office a few years ago asking if I would join them in worship and in feeding some of our homeless members of our community around Thanksgiving. And I was happy to oblige. And I saw our NPUT chairwoman, Angela Clyde, there. And you know, my wife likes to remind me sometimes a little slow on the take. And so I had to, you know, look back and forth. It's like, y'all are related. The last name is not a coincidence. And so it's just been amazing, not only to work with you all these years, but to see how much your passion for our communities is not just reflected in your work and your service, but of your entire family. And so I appreciate you, Pastor Clyde, and all that you've done for our southwest Atlanta communities. I'm proud to be joining my colleague, Councilmember Boone, in celebrating and honoring the work that you've been doing these last 25 years. So thank you for all that you've done. So we have here a proclamation from the Atlanta City Council. And it states, "Recognizing the 25th anniversary of Dr. Willie Clyde and Pathway Christian Ministries. Whereas Dr. Willie Clyde is an anointed man of God who faithfully serves in the office of pastor, teacher, and prophet, and whose life and ministry are rooted in prayer and the supernatural power of God that transforms lives. And whereas Dr. Clyde's service began long before his formal ordination through his military service as a military policeman and correctional officer in the United States Army," I have to throw a "whoa" in there. "His honorable career with the Atlanta Housing Authority, and his decades of advocacy for youth and families as a probation officer with the Fulton County Juvenile Court." And whereas, after accepting his call to ministry in 1995 under the leadership of Dr. R.L. White, Dr. Clyde was ordained in 1999 and went on to establish Pathway to Righteousness Christian Ministries, today known as Pathway Christian Ministries, a nondenominational ministry committed to empowering families and individuals through faith, prayer, biblical teaching, and the power of the Holy Spirit. And whereas Dr. Clyde's educational accomplishments, including degrees from the CAP Community College, Georgia State University, and the Inter-Denominational Theological Center, exemplify his dedication to pastoral care, Christian education, and leadership development, enabling him to shepherd and inspire generations of believers. And whereas, Pathway Christian Church, located on Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard since 2009, carries forward nearly a century of worship in its historic building, fostering discipleship, strong families, and generational faithfulness while standing as a beacon of hope in southwest Atlanta. And whereas, Abraham's House Incorporated, founded in 2001, extends the ministry's mission by addressing poverty, violence, and systemic inequities through food assistance, housing support, counseling, youth programs, and outreach initiatives, such as Mina from Heaven, the Community Closet, Toys for Tots, and back-to-school giveaways, offering hope, healing, and restoration of families across Atlanta. And whereas, in 2024, Pathway Christian Ministries celebrates 25 years of worship, 25 years of service, and 25 years of community, honoring every prayer, every sermon, every song, and every act of love that has strengthened families and uplifted communities throughout Atlanta. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby recognize and commend Dr. Willie Clyde and Pathway Christian Ministries for their extraordinary service to the people of Atlanta, their commitment to empowering individuals and families through faith and compassion, and their enduring legacy as a spiritual and community anchor. Congratulations to us again.
And now, our next speaker, Angela Clyde, our wonderful neighborhood leader, NPUT Chair, sweet, strong spirit from NPUT, none other than Angela Clyde.
Good afternoon. It gives me great honor to stand here as NPUT Chair for a church that serves within the NPUT community, but also from the pastor of the church, who is my father. So it is an extremely great honor. I want to thank you for the service that you and the Pathway Christian Church has done within the Westview community, for the surrounding areas, the commitment. I especially remember during the time of COVID. I especially remember during the time of COVID, you were one of the only churches that did not close. As a daughter, I was thinking, Dad, you're a senior, you need to be at home. But as a pastor, you were committed to serving and not closing the doors of the church. And so, thank you for 25 years of service. Thank you for the service to the Westview and the Western community and to the surrounding areas. We are delighted to have your service and to have you within Pathway in our community. And as your daughter, I want to say how extremely proud I am of you to be able to stand here with you today. And my sister and... And my brother-in-law. On behalf of the NPUT.
Oh, okay. This came as a surprise, but um, his daughter Angela Clyde is now the Chairwoman of NPUT. Back in 2017, I was Chair of NPUT. We met in a school year-round, but in the summer, the school closed. And so, we showed up for a meeting one night. We had no place to meet indoors. We met outside. And Angela was a part of the body. And she says, well, if we don't have a meeting place, I might know someplace. Pastor Clyde opened up the church to the NPUT, allowed us to meet there. And we're very gracious. I think they even fed us that night. And anyway, we've forged a relationship ever since then. I'm here not only to support his daughter, but to support Pastor Clyde as well. He is a neighbor in the community, and his work speaks for itself and stands on its own. Thank you so much, Dr. Clyde, Reverend Clyde.
And next, our next speaker is First Lady, our friend, Tracy Clyde.
Good afternoon, everyone. I stand here soulful because I am with him so many hours of the day. I wake up when he prays in the morning at 4:00 a.m. I wake up when he comes back to bed at 6:00 a.m. after really pouring his heart out to God because I've stayed awake and pretended like I was asleep and I laid there and prayed with him as he was in his prayer room on his prayer cloth covered in his stole. He takes this very seriously. Being committed to our community, being committed to our church and our family means a lot to him. And so, I stand before you, very honored to tell you that you are honoring a man that lives it, he breathes it, he loves God, and God loves him. And so, we celebrate 25 years of incredible service, and I honor the man as well.
And now, the next voice you will hear will be one of a living legend in southwest Atlanta, our unsung hero, a hero to the homeless, a hero to those that need support, a hero to those that just need a friend, Dr. Willie Clyde.
First of all, giving honor and thanksgiving to God, who's ahead of all of our lives. And just thanking God for my family, my wife, my family, my friends, and especially Councilman Boone, Councilman Dozier, for this recognition, for this opportunity. I thank you so much. But just to be brief, I want to go back for just a moment because I think this makes the difference in my life. Got out of military in 1973, looking for a job. I had to make a decision as to what type of job I wanted. I had two opportunities, two job offers at the same time. Had a job offer from Delta Airlines, had a job offer from Atlanta Public Housing Authority. I knew if I went with Delta, I could make some money. I would be financially well-secured. Went to public housing, I wasn't sure how I would come out, pan out financially. After prayer and much consideration, I decided to take that job at public housing, became a community organizer. From there, went to the juvenile court for 20, 25 years. After the juvenile court, looking for a new career venture, and that's when God called me. Told my congregation on Sunday, God, I don't want to do this. I don't want, I don't like religion, I don't want to do religion. But if I'm going into it, I want to make a difference. And that has been a compelling driving force in my life, the life of my, my wife, my children, that God, we want to make a difference. So, we're not doing this for recognition. We appreciate the recognition, appreciate the honor. But there are those within our community, there are those that are our neighbors, who are not as well fortunate as we are, who have had circumstances, situations that have derailed their lives and difficult to getting back on track. And I just believe that God puts an anointing of power on all of our lives to touch somebody else's life to make a difference. And that's one thing we've committed ourselves to, not just church, not just religion, but making a difference in the lives of our neighbors and our friends and even our enemies. And that's what we strive for. And that's the call that's on every one of our lives, and that is to make a difference, not to leave this world as we found it, but leave our footprint in the life of somebody else where you can see that you made a difference. Again, I thank my wife, my family, all my friends that are here. I thank God for all of you. But thank God for just giving me this, honoring me with this recognition today. Thank you so very much.
And if I also might say, happy birthday to Councilwoman Andrea Boone. I just want to say happy birthday to you and thank you and Councilman Dozier for being extraordinary council people within our District 10 and District 4. Thank you all so much. Want to recognize Western Merchant Coalition President Myrna Anderson Fuller, my cousins, friends, Marie Wilbert, and longtime family friends from Baptist Church and childhood family members as well. We have been celebrating all year. We will culminate our big celebration on the 27th at the Hyatt Regency. So, just thank you all for this honor. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Councilman Boone, as well. Thank you.
25 years, Dr. Willie Clyde and Pathway Christian Ministries. Congratulations. We'll now have an official photo.
Thank you. Finally today, I'd like to ask Councilmember Ishay Collins to come forward and all of those who are here in recognition of Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, Adopt a Spot members and community volunteers, please come forward and join us on the dais.
Yes. Thank you. Let's pray it on home, Ishay.
This is great. Oh, great. I love it. Well, we're going to go ahead and get this, get this party started by celebrating the amazing work of Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, our Adopt a Spot members and community volunteers. It is a great honor for me to present this resolution, recognizing the great work. And if you don't know about the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, it's been around, I want to make sure I have this right, since 1976. So, you turn, what, 50 years next year. It started as the Atlanta Clean City Commission under our great Mayor Maynard Jackson. And so, over the years, under our mayors and our city leadership, we have been committed to moving Atlanta forward as one safe city, decreasing litter, improving recycling, and beautifying our communities. And so, to recognize not only the great work of our Department of Public Works staff, the commission members, our Adopt a Spot members and community volunteers, I want to start off this recognizing and talking about this resolute, this resolute proclamation, sorry, in terms of what just Shirley Chisholm says, "Service is the rent we pay for the privilege of living on this earth." And the work that they have done, and when I read you the hours and the cleanups and the amount of litter that the commission has done and our volunteers and community, this is well worth the recognition and is beyond well-deserved. And so, the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission seeks volunteers to assist in keeping our public spaces clean. And in 2024, Adopt a Spot participants have conducted 135 cleanups and are responsible for removing 29.5 tons of litter from 119 miles of city roads by engaging 2,321 volunteers, you all. That's thousands, 2,321 volunteers, completing 4,933,000 volunteer hours in a cleanup effort just since 2014. And we want to, excuse me, 2024. And whereas, our volunteers are acknowledged as Adopt a Spot members, and I know you all may have seen the shirts or signage, receiving supplies, support, and recognition in return for your, for their volunteer efforts. And any portion of the city's public right-of-way is eligible for adoption, including our streets and medians. And so, I want to take this time to not only recognize the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, our Adopt a Spot members and community volunteers for your great work and service to our beloved city. We know without your, without your participation, without your space, Atlanta would not be the beautiful place that it is. And we can hope and continue and pray that the work continues. And so, this proclamation is to express our sincere appreciation to the, to the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission for its dedication to the Department of Public Works. I'm going to stop here because I want to turn the mic over to three key people, three key leaders in this space and give them an opportunity to say a few words. Start with our new Commissioner of Public Works, someone that I have had the opportunity to work with over the years, Anna Meyer, Mr. Cywil Turner, our Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, Kanika Greenlee. And Keep America Beautiful, that started, I think, what, 1953? I try to look at my, try to get my dates. Started in 1953 with us, Ms. Jenny Lawson. So, in that order, I would love for both, all you guys to say a few words. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the introduction. And I'm delighted to be here in this great city I love so much. And I get to, and I say get to because it's a privilege, to be able to keep the city beautiful and really be proud of the city and leave it as one that we can all be proud of, you know, when our days are over. But this is going to be a great experience, a great team that has just been really impressive and responsive. And so, I just know we're just going to do great things with this team. And I will now hand it over to DC Greenlee.
Good morning, everyone. I have the pleasure of serving in dual roles as Deputy Commissioner of Department of Public Works, but also as Executive Director of Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. And while a lot of you may know me as a face of the organization, these are the tireless volunteers that do the work. So, let's give them a round of applause. We have over 100 Adopt a Spot in Atlanta. And we have countless numbers of community cleanups going on almost every Saturday in the city of Atlanta. And for those that don't know, Adopt a Spot is a program where individuals, groups, or businesses commit to regularly removing litter and keeping a designated space clean. So, whether it's a roadway, a martyr bus stop, these are the volunteers that are out there getting the work done. Now, there is a minimum requirement for you to do it four times a year, but most of these volunteers, as you see up here on this dais, go above and beyond and do it sometimes once a day, once a week, once a month, quarterly. So, again, amazing work. We have some dedicated board members here with us, and I want to recognize our Vice Chair, Yvonne Douglas, with the Atlanta Belt Line, our Board Chair, Reginald Robey with Georgia Power. We also have a great Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission staff. Raise your hand. Those are the ones that you call for those cleanups and supplies. And then, we are powered by the Department of Public Works. We are housed in the Department of Public Works, and we're powered by their support. And we have Director Tracy Chambers with Special Operations. Her team is the one that's getting out, picking up those trash bags after you do your community cleanups. If you haven't had a chance to visit our revamped Adopt a Spot website, please do so. It's easier than ever to go online and sign up to get supplies for your community cleanups or to become an Adopt a Spot member. And with that, I'd like to join, turn it over to Jenny Lawson, who is a special treat for us. She is the Keep America Beautiful CEO. Here in town, we have the privilege of hosting the National Fundraiser next month in October, but she's here visiting Atlanta and seeing some of the great work that we're doing. But I'd like to leave you with this, that everyone deserves to lead, live in a clean and beautiful community, and that's what these volunteers do.
Thank you, Kanika, and congratulations. And thank you to each of you as volunteers. When you are walking down the street and there's... When you are walking down the street and there's litter on the ground and you say, "Whose job is it to clean this up?", these are the people who stand up and say, "It'll be my job. I will take this on." It is how we know we are neighbors with each other. It's to dwell near the places that bring us together, and you are each neighbors and friends, and you are what build the amazing community that is Atlanta. So thank you for what you're doing as one of 730 affiliates across the Keep America Beautiful universe here in the U.S. So thank you very much.
And so with that being said, I will read the proclamation quickly. Some of the information I've stated, but before I do that, I do want to give a personal shout out to, I see my own Adopt a Spot community volunteer, Ms. Taliesia Barksdale, with the Prince of Lakes Commune, that keep us, that keep us together a couple, every, every month, and your Vice Chair, Yvonne Douglas. We did the work together at APS, so really excited to have a great leader with you all. So recognizing the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission, Adopt a Spot volunteers and community volunteers, whereas the mayor and the city of Atlanta are committed to moving Atlanta forward as one safe city by decreasing litter in the public right-of-way, and whereas the city of Atlanta right-of-way has high pedestrian and vehicular traffic with litter, with litter that needs to be abated efficiently to make those high-traffic areas attractive to residents and visitors alike. And the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission seeks volunteers to assist in keeping public spaces clean, and whereas in 2024, as I stated, Adopt a Spot participants have conduct, have conducted 135 cleanups and are responsible for removing 25.5 tons of litter from 119 miles of the city roads by engaging 200, 2,321 volunteers, contributing to 4,933 volunteer hours in cleanup effort. And whereas volunteers are acknowledged as Adopt a Spot members, receiving supplies, support, and recognition in return for your, for their volunteer efforts, any portion of the city's public right-of-way is eligible again for adoption, including streets and medians. And now therefore it be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby express our sincere appreciation to the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission for its dedication to the Department of Public Works and to our great city. Thank you and congratulations. And so we will now move up. We will move forward for an official photo. Let's see, go up here. Come on, come on. I come from a big family, so. Ms. Lawson, come on.
Right here first. Three, two, one. What's up? Right here. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
My name is Lance Yaw. We're doing great work. I, yeah. And, you know, it's beer man. It's not very American. And then you have jumping.
Excuse me.
You need to come to Charlotte with me. I'm like, okay.
Just really quick, before everyone starts to leave, if you are here for the Adopt a Spot proclamation, we do have a reception that's being held in old city council chambers. So if you could please meet me outside of these double doors, and I will lead you all across the hall into the next building. Thank you.
I'm going to the inside too, Jeres. Come on, come on. Come on, come on.
Thank you all. We'll now move to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that you will have up to two minutes unless you've been yielded time on the list. You cannot yield time at the podium. And I will do my best with everybody's name, but again, apologies in advance, and please correct for the record if I do not get your name correct. First up today is Henry Jordan. You'll have up to two minutes.
Came out this Friday, God, everyone that's here. He that works to seek shall not dwell within my house. He that tells lies shall not tell in my sight. Songs 101, Chapter 7, verse. This, the idea of King sings unto the Lord, keeps his personal life pure, and administers social justice. Jesus says, "Why do you tell lies about what he has done through me? You regret. You reject Christ working through me." James Griffin, others professing themselves to be wise, they became fools. Romans 1, Chapter 22, verse. All men have the revelation of God; therefore all men are carnivore to him. My flesh asked Jesus to give James Griffin a chance, even though God said he is against his word. I regret it now. Create in me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within me. Psalms 51, Chapter 10, verse. David's cry, here may reflect only the fear, not the reality of losing the Spirit and being rejected by God. We have no power against Satan without Jesus. But I say unto you, love your enemies, bless them that curse you, do good to them that hate you, and pray for them which despisefully use you and persecute you. Matthew 5, Chapter 44, verse. The love enjoin in this passage is love that originates from God himself. I shall possess income that Jesus will recreate it through me for your protection plan, not you. James has been called to preach the word. Jesus will avenge me. We need what Christ has. He asked us to give him what's due to him. He created us to serve and obey Christ, and we need it for protection against the enemy and us, around us, and others. We can be an enemy to ourselves.
Thank you. Next up today will be Valerie Anderson. Due to yield a time, you'll have up to six minutes today.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I wanted to speak on, how is it, how is it that we have people getting fired, reprimanded, reprimanded for speaking their mind about a vile racist person, Charlie Kirk? And he's being uplifted. And then we have, on the other hand, a police officer who murdered my son and still have a job. So how, where is the disconnect with, we have a racist person speaking all these vile stuff, but he's getting all these praises for real mean vile stuff? Vile, I mean, I have never seriously ever heard such vile stuff coming from a human being. But yet, we have him being uplifted and people getting fired in, being in their own space, voicing their opinion and getting fired for it. Less than someone who committed murder that has a job, like, seriously, I mean, how, where is the disconnect? I would really like to know where is the disconnect? Because if murder isn't the ultimate, what is? I think murder and a racist, it don't go hand in hand. It doesn't. Because I think when you take someone's life, that's the ultimate that you could do, especially for no reason how Melvin Potter murdered my son. But he still has a job. He was home for a year collecting a check. Now he has a job, and I have no son. My son is never coming back. And I'm upset about that. I just want you all to know, I'm very upset about that because with the record that he had, he shouldn't even be, you know, if I say what I really want to say, I guess, is, you know, it would be very, very vile too. But Melvin Potter is a monster. With the record that he have, that all, I'm pretty sure all of you familiar with his record now. Okay, I'm pretty sure all of you with his record. Why is this, why does this man still have a job? Why am I still coming down here for a year? Well, it's more than a year now, trying to get justice for my son. It's been a year and a month I lost my son. Okay? Talk up. Useless drunk, abuser, Melvin Potter. And I have to fight. I mean, fight with everything I have in me as a mother to try get justice for my son. Fight like hell to get, to try get, at least to try get this man fired. And even that is not happening, to try even get this man fired with the record that he has. Being on probation when he murdered my son and ordered not to drink. But here it is, I'm coming down here. Like I said, I made it to one year. I'm gonna make it to two. I'm gonna make it to three, four, five, six, 10, if, if I have to, coming down here to get justice for my son. Not going nowhere. So if you all think, when you all don't see me, that, you know, I'm not up for the challenge, mother is up for the challenge. Because I said from day one, I am not going nowhere. Melvin Potter should be fired, charged, have his day in court, and hopefully go into prison. Because if it was my son, and I'm gonna say this till I probably lose all my teeth, if it was my son, they would have fast-tracked him to prison already. They would have fast-tracked my son to prison already. So why is Melvin Potter not? I don't get, I don't care he's on desk duty. Like I said the last time, I was, hey, he don't even deserve to be a janitor, much less to be a police officer. He don't even deserve to be a garbage truck driver, much less a police officer. Okay? So what does it take? Again, the ultimate is when you, is murder. Is murder. So I mean, I'm, well, because again, like I told you, I'm not here to beg. I'm not here to beg. I'm, I'm over that. I'm, I want action. I'm frustrated, but since, you know, it's moving slowly, how, not even slowly, it's crawling, but I'm gonna be here. Because I said from day one, I'm gonna show up for my son because my son didn't dissolve this. My son didn't dissolve. Oh, let me show you all my son. This is my son, Devon Anderson, that was murdered by a lawless drunk APD officer who was on probation when he murdered my son and only got charged with obstruction of justice. Now, you think if my son had murdered him, he would have got charged with obstruction? My son would have got, my son would have been beaten if he had made it to jail, but he'd have got charged with murder for a fact. He would have got charged with murder. So yes, I'm here, I'm present, and I'm showing up. So thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Deacon Casey Cameron. So I've up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. I am Deacon Casey Cameron. I am the Chairman, Deacon of Live Life, Tabernacle Place, in the hearts of the Vine City community, one of the communities that is still overlooked. As one of the kids asked me, how can we hold them accountable when we won't even hold you all accountable? And it's truly sad. We come down here to speak with you all. Some of you all are politicians, some of you all are not. Because the last time I came down here, I tried to get a meeting with the mayor. And when y'all running for office, we see y'all all up in churches, not testing, fine, but testing light, saying, "What y'all gonna do for the community?" And once y'all gets in office, half of y'all show up doing public comments, half of y'all don't. So whoever become the president needs to raise the public comment up to five limit, five minutes limit. That way somebody can't give their times away. So everyone can let you all know what y'all is not doing. So y'all need to have either yourself or your staff members that rise to district to see all these streets that crumbling, to see the community is going down, especially now in the West End community, as well as Vine City, English Avenue. Y'all fix the out portion of the part, when y'all, the first stadium, you just probably been fixing up the whole community, overlooked, and it needs to stop. So y'all need to start being with your face-based community. Because it's 80,000 women and children come homeless each year, which y'all walk right over like y'all don't see them. So it's time for y'all to stand for something and stop falling for anything. Because as long as you're, all of us standing on ground, we all got one more second to get it right. It is truly left up to each one of us what we choose to do with that second. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next will be Althea Brown. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, President and Council members. I am Althea Brown, a filmmaker and photographic artist, and the director of the documentary MacPherson Major General. Thank you for your support for this project and investing in artists who create work that serves veterans, students, and our wider community. This film takes viewers inside the Civil War at the Siege of Vicksburg from the perspective of the soldiers who were there. Every word was verbatim from 1860s diaries, letters, and official records, no invented dialogue. I use AI as a camera, not an author, to visualize the record already, what the record already says while keeping Major General James B. MacPherson at the center of the narrative. Why does this matter? Many in our community served at Fort MacPherson, which was named for him. The film gives context to the name, leadership, under pressure, duty to one's command, and it opens a door for veteran voices and classroom conversations about history, ethics, and service. I want to thank you again for helping artists turn archives into living stories and to invite you to the screening and artist talk on September 21st at the Futures Lab in Underground Atlanta.
Thank you. Next will be Reverend Dr. Christina Clement. You have up to two minutes. George.
Good afternoon. I am Reverend Dr. Christina Clement, president of the State of Lock Nation Global Public Benefit Corp., federally filed and internationally noticed, and today I come with a solution. When the pyramid was placed on the dollar, it was more than a design, it was a covenant, a promise of a government meant to endure and to deliver justice. But that pyramid was left unfinished and that promise unfulfilled. As Dr. King said, America has given its colored people a check which has come back marked insufficient funds because the dollars in your pocket is not the black dollar. And as Malcolm X reminded us, we're not outnumbered, we're outorganized. The State of Lock Nation completed that build of the missing room, the fulfillment of what was denied, the completion of what was left undone. The moral of the story is this: unfinished justice is no justice at all. A covenant ignored is a covenant broken. But when leaders rise to finish the work, the people are restored. And so today, we don't just bring words, we bring action. Through the Lock Nation Dollar, the official black dollar, we are making a donation equal to half of the city of Atlanta's 2025 budget, which totals to 526,667 LND, which can be converted into 395 million USD to fund the underfunded communities who have waited too long outside the walls. This is not charity, this is restitution, this is not a favor, this is justice delayed, delivered at last. We ask that the city clerk registered it in the official journal and the mayor acknowledged it in his proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Vanessa Young. You'll have up to two minutes today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members and president. My name is Vanessa, member of the State of Lock Nation Global Public Benefit Corporation. The resolution, as mentioned, is not just a donation, it is a restitution constitution. It answers every historic complaint: land and housing denied after emancipation, benefits stripped under the GI Bill and redlining, families broken by incarceration and poverty, lives shortened by poor health in toxic neighborhoods. Under this covenant, Atlanta will lead the nation by building a 19-acre restitution headquarters in Atlanta, hiring 300,000 unemployed residents into real jobs, creating schools that teach authentic black history, coding, and innovation, protecting our homeless with a psychologist's transition homes and care, enforcing housing standards so no landlord profits from misery, establishing a restitution defense corps with full protection benefits to all U.S. service members, and protecting our children's God-given talents from exploitation so that the next Michael Jackson or Whitney Houston is safeguarded from birth. This is not symbolic, it is enforceable with the State of Lock Nation council partner and every department accountable. Atlanta can and will be the pilot city that shows the world what restitution could look like in law, in policy, and in action. Council members, the time is overdue. Please accept this donation, accept these terms, let Atlanta stand as the first city in America to move from promises to performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Helen D. Williams. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good morning, everybody. I am here to, I was wanting to speak in reference of martyr, and I wanted to speak in reference of the city. But however, after coming behind Mr. Cameron, I am, in turn, would like to speak about Vine City. I have been, I always come and say that I lived in Vine City 30-plus years, and Mr. Cameron is completely right. The city has made a promise to the community within that development on what you chose to step in. You have, they have not honored the commitment within the development of the community. There has been some big buildings being built in our community in reference of helping people who are in need of drugs or rehabilitation services and some housing that is being developed. However, you're not giving our community individuals a place to appease this mental issue that we have or this drug issue that they may have. There are no flowers in the community. The street still looks dead. When I choose to elevate my mindset, I have to go to Piedmont Park, I have to go to Midtown, or I have to leave my community. That is so unfortunate for a person who has given 30 years of service within this community. I'm saying to Byron Amos, I asked him one time when I was trying to be a part of the community to develop a program for my community with the Vine City Civic Association, instead of them appeasing to what I was challenging them to do was to do a photo shop, I'm sorry, arts craft, basketball, reading, and all the things that a child can use to escape from all the things that they are normally used to. That was kicked out and unable to be utilized, but they stole my name and went on with the information. But I'm here to say with, to Byron, I asked you also one time, did you hear the gunshots that night? And you responded, no. And I also said, well, dog, it's only half and three blocks from your house. I come, I'm only one block and I heard it. But Byron, I now realize you don't even live in my community.
Thank you. Next will be Nikki Boggs. Oh, Councilor Amos.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, those who know me will allow the public to speak, but when untruth is completely said, I must address it.
Please.
Fifty-three years I have lived in Vine City. I'm sorry, 52 and a half, I hit 53 in the next month. So I cannot and do not understand why you believe I do not stay in Vine City. Whether I was home that night for various reasons, I don't know why I did not hear the shots. You talk about leaving the community, you have June Monday Park, we have Cook Park, all receiving national and some even global recognitions of the park. So I feel as if you, I'm sorry, as if you feel as if you still have to leave our community, because it is our community, to appease yourself. There are some still real issues we have to deal with in Vine City. Vine City Civic Association is an internal matter that I, as a council member, have very little say-so over. That's the residence in which I am a resident of Vine City. But I'd just like to address the fact that I do stay in Vine City. If you want to challenge that, I can give you whatever proof you need. Thank you.
The rebuttal to that, sir, is that you do not live in Vine City, you just bought a house, but it's okay, but Vine City still needs your help. That's all I'm saying.
Next up will be Nikki Boggs. Due to yield in time, you'll have up to four minutes.
Good afternoon. I will wait until you guys, wait until you guys are ready. All right. At the landmark, we purchased our forever homes with the intentions of it being a forever home and not being taken away. Saturday when I came home, I usually give back to our community for students that can't afford to take ballet lessons, so that's what I do. This is what I came home to. Some girls twerking outside in the foyer area of my apartment. This is a homeless person that actually, we have homeless people that now visit the building and come through the building. Can you see it? This gentleman actually has been at this, this location, he'll sit outside the front sometimes too. That's where we are. That's what the landmark now has. And this is our home, where we pay property taxes, we pay HOAs, and the, it seems as if the board has the power to go ahead and take our homes with no repercussions. Some time ago, I actually sent you a packet that I received for speaking in front of city council, a xenophobic packet that you actually have. I'm placing these there again because there was never a response from anyone. And what ended up happening was that we all of a sudden became the people that caused this to happen. Instead of the group sending it out, being handled, we were actually mishandled. Then after that, a defamation lawsuit. Now, this is my home. So now I'm being reprimanded for speaking to you and asking you for help for our building. Not only after that, then I had a dear friend whose child was receiving a proclamation. And I'll wait until you guys finish, and then I'll, I'll, I'll speak, so I'm gonna hold my time. No, I am gonna hold my time, I just, I want, I want to get the attention.
Sorry, you cannot hold your time, the time continues.
If we're here, I understand what you're sharing, but if we're here to speak, then we should have the undivided attention as well. So it's to revoke, that's, I'm with you, I'm with you, but, you know, let's, let's handle each other accordingly. How about that? So when I actually came up to take, to participate in that photo op, one council member pulled the other council member over as if I was somehow going to harm you. I've never presented myself in that manner to you guys. It's, that's never been my goal, and I've always been honest with you guys with what's been happening in the building, what we're living with, the shootings, the deaths, the being fined so that we can lose our homes, so that, that, that we can have foreclosures placed on our homes, gainings placed on our homes. That's what we're experiencing. And I find it really insulting that each day, each week, each month, we come up here to speak in front of you, it's almost as if you're just doing me a favor that we're just speaking. This is our homes. We're taxpayers like you, we're your constituents. And then the foreclosure. This is all due to no action. We've asked what else can be done, and all we get are blank stares. The landmark is a poster child. If you don't take care of this now, it is a poster child for what's going to happen for the future. Not just our neighborhood, not just our high-rise building, our, our historical building. It's gonna come to your neighborhood. And I would hate to think that this is how you would respond. And I'm sure if it was coming in your, in your homes, then this would be something that you would be vigilant on working on and thwarting. We have people in our building losing our homes, we have seniors in the building, they're scared. And we're still saying the same thing, it is now past four years. I realize I'm unimportant to you. I understand that, and I realize it's about money, and you losing money out of your pockets could be that, Airbnb investors in the stitch and, and World Cup coming in, we get it, but we're just as important, we really are. We're just as important. So I'm sorry you feel annoyed that we keep coming up and saying the same thing, but as I said, we'll be glad to help you with whatever we need to do.
Time is expired.
Me having a stripper in front of my door twerking.
Thank you.
That's what we get.
Time has expired.
I understand that. But the proclamation lasted longer, we paid for parking, so I can bring my parking ticket to you, and you can take care of that, and we can talk about expired time.
Time has expired, thank you.
I hear you. Have a little bit more, have a little bit more respect for the people that come up in front of you.
Next up will be Devin Franklin. Due to yield in time, you have up to four minutes.
Good afternoon, council. For those who are not familiar with me watching in the public, my name is Devin Franklin. I am senior movement policy counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights. And most frequently, when I come here to speak to you all, I come to speak to you about things that lie at the intersection of your authority, as well as the criminalization of poverty, public safety, the criminal legal system here in Atlanta, and honest, transparent operation of local government, particularly where residents are not in position to advocate for themselves. However, I'm gonna depart from that general stance today and speak to you all about an issue of a bit more, of a larger import. Today, I am here to speak to you all about some issues that go beyond the boundaries of our fair city. And that pertains specifically, specifically to some actions that have been taken by our president, Donald J. Trump. Since his inauguration, the president has made exceptional use of his authority to issue executive orders. And given the sheer volume of those executive orders, we know there have been quite literally hundreds of them. I'm not sure to the extent that you all are aware of the details of what is involved in those. However, I do want to bring your attention to two executive orders that were issued on August 25th that I believe had particular impact on the city of Atlanta or potential impact on the city of Atlanta. The first is an executive order directing the Attorney General Pam Bondi to put together a list of states and local jurisdictions that have substantially eliminated cash bail as a potential condition to pre-trial release for crimes that pose a clear threat to public safety, and they have effectively threatened to withdraw federal funds from local jurisdictions that have enacted such rules. That's the first one. The second is an executive order issued that instructs the Department of Defense to create a specialized National Guard unit that by language would supplement local and state law enforcement. But as we have been able to discern from surrounding rhetoric involving the deployment of National Guard troops in other cities, it actually is intended to impermissibly supplant domestic law enforcement. On September 2nd of this year, I'm senior policy counsel Blake Feldman of the Southern Center for Human Rights, sent you all an email. I have the physical letter that he sent you all there discussing why you all should not obey in advance any initiatives as it pertains to rolling back the advances made by bail reform in 2018 by this body. The specifics involve the fact that, one, the nature of the things that have been subject to bail reform in Atlanta don't really apply with the language that has been put forth by the president, and additionally, that this is a matter of pure local control and that his, his threat to withdraw federal funds, if any, should it come to that point, would not in fact actually be applicable to the city of Atlanta. You all have legal grounds to withstand that. Additionally, as it pertains to the utilization of the National Guard units as a supplemental policing agency, I emailed you all this morning and have given a physical copy of my letter to you all as well, effectively informing you all of the boundaries that the government actually has in that regard. To be brief, there has been an injunction granted in California that states that the federal government cannot impose local domestic use of military forces for policing. And additionally, I encourage you all to look at some of the actions that have been taken by the city of Chicago in terms of their, their mayor issuing a executive order of his own, instructing council to not be cooperative with the efforts of the federal government there.
Time is expired.
So I just ask that you all read that letter, and we will be back periodically to update you all as to how we can help with that effort. Thank you.
Next will be Craig Galanos. Craig Galanos. You have up to two minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Craig Galanos with the Atlanta Beautification Committee. I'm part of the Chad Livesey Foundation, a nonprofit here in Atlanta, working towards beautification while I work for the elimination of graffiti in and around Atlanta. I'm currently working with the old Fourth Ward President Tom Boyle to create a coalition of all the neighborhood associations and the tool bank to organize neighbors with the tools and knowledge to create defensible spaces against graffiti vandals of Atlanta. I'm here asking for your support with one of your $50,000 community grants, as well as for the council to fund Crime Stoppers with an additional $50,000 earmarked for the arrest and conviction of the 30 most prolific vandals. I provided a list of those vandals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Akonatan Woodley Tayimba. You have up to two minutes.
Greetings. We're part, we're here on behalf of PDI Veterans Repair. I'm a, I'm a retired veteran, disabled 100% veteran. Our speaker here is gonna come right after me and talk a little bit about what we do. He was part of Fulton County, Atlanta, for economic development. He's also the only person alive who has a sport in the Olympics, and of course, the creator of PDI Veterans Repair. Dr. William Paul, I yield my time.
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't yield time from, unless you've done it on the, on the, on the list. I'm sorry.
That's what they told me, so I'm just gonna what they told me back there.
You have to do it on the list. It's your time.
Veterans, Veterans Repair, our, our goal is to bring veterans off the street. Everybody keeps talking about veterans off the street. Oh, we talking about women and children. I don't know if you know that women and children cannot go in a shelter. Women and children cannot go in the same shelter. Why? Because nobody's ever thought about that part. The child is gonna get probably molested. You know how things are when you're in the, in a communal, communal environment. That is something we need to correct. We can't correct. We do housing. We have property in District Four right now. I talked to you, sir, about that. And we're going around the country. We also have a real estate company, nonprofit real estate company that helps us with this process.
Time is expired. Next up will be William Paul. You'll also have two minutes.
My name is Dr. William Paul, formerly of the Governor's Office Planning and Budget Management Review, Georgia Department of Industry and Trade in Fulton, Atlanta, Georgia, Office of Economic Development as manager. We have a plan to eradicate homelessness. Currently, we are going after 2,000 homes and can secure some from the area of the metropolitan Atlanta. I own a real estate company, largest one in America. We just received over $500 million in getting these homes and putting them back into the mainstream. We're currently working with the She-Ros, which is women, veterans who are four times more likely to become homeless than the general populace. We're trained to kill, but not trained to live. I'm a Vietnam veteran myself. With that in mind, we traveled all over America and getting these proclamations from Washington all over. We have a solution to the problem instead of being a part of the problem. I once was homeless myself. So again, we would like to bring to the city council, we have a solution for Atlanta to be the leader, and leading the way by eradicating homeless throughout America, put them in permanent housing. We have over 500 that we already have set up throughout America. In addition to that, we have another 60 that we're setting up, put them in real, whole, not tiny homes. We are veterans. We wanna work and find a way to get the nonprofits. I operate 25,000, the first one in America, and also have a sport in Olympus, the first black, or person that alive with a sport in Olympus. We can do it as a planner. That's what we do. So with that, we can show you how to do it. God bless you, and we have the organization called ChurchOnTheRoute.com. My name is Bill Paul. Look it up, and we are doing this all over America. With your help, we can eradicate the problem. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Raymond Cody. Raymond Cody. Next will be Philip Cunningham. Philip Cunningham. Next will be Marjorie Cloud. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. I want to invite everybody here, all the city council member to come, Senator Donzella James gonna have rent control September 18th. Put that on your calendar, please, at 1:00 PM. I want all, I want to see all these faces to be there, and please make it for rent control, because we have to put a cap on the rent. You could do it, but y'all didn't listen to me. The House Bill 581, you could have put a cap, because if you could put a cap on the county tax, why you couldn't put a cap on rent control? But I'm just letting you know about other things also. We're getting ready for the World Cup. The World Cup. We making everything shiny, everything good, but do y'all have a B plan when the people do not come? Because we are banking on this revenue, and if we don't get that revenue, what would happen to the city? Do y'all think about that? Because, because of Trump, people's not coming. The athletes is coming, but all that revenue, what's gonna happen? Because Mercedes Benz, this summer, they say the soccer team, it was half full. People's not traveling like you saying they're traveling, but we got all our eggs, the World Cup coming, but these apartments that's empty now, and they're so high, believe Georgia, they gonna have a move-in special after World Cup. That's all I have to say. Put a cap on the rent.
Thank you. Finally today will be Jody Williams. Jody Williams. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Jody Williams, and I'm coming to speak on the homeless. The homeless population is growing, and we gotta find out what we can do about it as a community, as the city council. It's growing. Go to the QuickTrip, Kroger, the women and their children are living in their cars in the parking lot. We must help these people. I don't know how, because I don't have that kind of money, but I can help devise a plan to do so. It's like you've given up on them for the last two years, they haven't had any help, but because you wanted the homeless people to move from under the bridge, you helped them. I've been coming here for the women and children who are out on the streets with their kids. They need help. In the rain, their kids are getting sick. In the night air, because they have nowhere to live. They have jobs. They have jobs. They're paying car notes and insurance, but they're living outside because they can't afford to get an apartment, and they don't wanna go anywhere. They're from here. They're from the city of Atlanta. But the city has taken away their hands up, you know? I have lots of friends who come from the housing projects that all they needed was a hand up to become doctors, lawyers, but they have no more hands up, and then you're taking things away from them, like housing, just letting them live on the streets. Help them. That's all I have to say to you all. I've been saying it for two years. Help them. Thank you for listening.
I want to thank all members of the public who have come forward today to speak to council. Next, we'll move to the report of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, council president, and members of council. I, Corinne A. Lindo, municipal clerk of the city of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, and the special call meeting held on Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 are true and correct?
If there are no additions or changes to the journal, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilor Bakhtiari, seconded by Councilor Juan. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the journal? We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the journal.
12 yeas, zero nays.
12 yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt the journal carries. Next one, move to communications. Madam Clerk.
First item, Mr. President, is 25C, 0110. This is a communication from council members Liliana Bakhtiari, District Five, Alex Juan, District Six, and Metwith Morland Post-Tour at Large, appointing Mr. James Cheeks to serve as a member of the zoning review board. This appointment is for a term of two years. Staff recommendation to refer to zoning committee and committee on council.
Will the item follow that course?
Item number two is 25C, 0111. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Cyril Turner to serve as the commissioner of the Department of Public Works for the city of Atlanta. Staff recommendation to refer to city utilities committee and committee on council.
Will the item follow that course?
Mr. President, if I may take items three and four as a block?
Without objection, please proceed.
Item number three is 25C, 0112. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing council member Mary Norwood to serve as the mayor's delegate of the Atlanta Fulton County Water Resources Commission. Item number four is 25C, 0113. This is a communication from Alana Moore, business administrator, African-American, panoramic experience, submitting the appointment of Mr. Daniel Moore Jr. to serve as a member of the commission to determine an appropriate manner in which to honor the 150th anniversary of the first regiment of US-colored troops formed in Atlanta by Bishop Henry Mitchell Turner. For both those items, staff recommendation to accept and file.
Let both items follow that course.
That concludes the communication items, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any veto legislation to consider?
I know there are none.
Thank you. There is one piece of unfinished business today, 2501445. This was held in the breast of council at the last meeting. I'm gonna ask Councilor Winston, who I think is going to help us take care of this legislation. Councilor Winston.
Yes, Council President. I do have a substitute for this paper, so I know it's held, so I need to make a motion.
Yep, I would entertain a motion to adopt, and that'll put it on the floor, and then you can make your subsequent motion.
So I'll make a motion to adopt?
There's a motion to adopt 2501445 to Councilmember Winston. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Bakhtiari. Is there discussion? Councilor Winston.
Colleagues, this was, we held this in the breast of council. We have, I have a substitute that adds another section where it puts a stipulation on the sale of this property to make sure that all, any outstanding judicial or administrative fines by the city are taken care of before this property is sold.
So I entertain a motion to?
So I'll make a motion and bring forth a substitute.
There's a motion by Councilor Winston, seconded by Councilor Juan, to bring forth a substitute on 2501445. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth a substitute? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to bring forth a substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's close, 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. The motion to bring forth the substitute carries. We will now, we're now on to the motion to adopt is now substituted. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt is substituted? No move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt. 2501445 is substituted.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's close, 12 yeas, one nay.
12 yeas, one nay. The motion to adopt is substituted carries. We will now move on to the consent agenda, section one. These are items that begin on page five, the materials. They are for second reading, therefore, the appropriate motion will be to adopt. But first, let me ask, are there items to be removed from the consent agenda today? Councilor Winston.
Thank you, Council President. On page six, I want to remove item, item number six, which is 25-01264.
25-01264. Are there any other items for removal? Councilor Amos.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I have one, page nine, item 16, 25-0-1496.
25-0-1496. So are there any other items for removal from the consent agenda, section one? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt with two items removed. Moved by Councilor Juan. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the consent agenda, section one, with two items removed? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? One moment. The vote's close, 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt the consent agenda with two items removed carries. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda, section two. These are items that begin on page 21. The appropriate motion will be to refer. Once again, let me ask, oh, Councilmember Lewis. Before we do that, there may be a?
Can I? President, well, I don't know if this is working, but hopefully you can hear me. Can we send 2501410 to the mayor post haste?
Say it again, 250, 250?
2501410, item number three, page six, to the mayor post haste.
1410. 2501410.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis moves that to move post haste. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there any discussion on the motion to move this item post haste? We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to move this item post haste.
13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. The motion to move this item post haste carries. Now, we'll move to the consent agenda, section two. Again, the appropriate motion will be to refer, but first, let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, section two? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilor Juan, seconded by Councilor Bakhtiari. Any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer the consent agenda, section two.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's close, 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. The motion to refer carries. Next, we'll move to the report of standing committees. First up today will be the committee on council, Chair Collins.
May I thank you, Mr. Council President. Before we get to our vote to fill the District Two vacancy, I'd like to address a couple of our legislative business items. If there are no objections, may we take items one through three together as a block?
Any objections? Nope, please proceed.
Okay. Communication 25-C-0097. Item one, a communication from Nicole Ponzianni, president, Georgia chapter of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, submitting the appointment of Mr. Tim Foster to serve as a member of the governing board of the Office of Inspector General. This appointment is for a term of three years. Item number 25-C-0102, a communication from Leona Bar-Davenport, president and CEO of the Atlanta Business League, submitting the appointment of Mr. Todd Gray to serve as a member of the governing board to the, of the Office of the Inspector General. This appointment is also for a term of three years. And item number 25-C-01043, a communication from Chairz Johnson, president, League of Women Voters of Atlanta Fulton County, submitting the appointment of Ms. Women Voters of Atlanta Fulton County, submitting the appointment of Ms. Nkoyo Effion Lewis to serve as a member of the Ethics Board. This appointment is for a term of three years. Per guidance from the Department of Law, all appointments to the Board of Ethics and Governing Board of the Office of Inspector General should be introduced as a resolution as a city charter states. And with that states that they are to be, to be full council appointments. Accordingly, our recommendation is to file these, is to file these as communications.
There is a, a recommendation coming out of committee to file these three items. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file these items? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. The vote's close. 12 yeas, zero nays.
12 yeas, zero nays. The motion to file carries.
Great. Next is item number four, 25-C-0106, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Matt Broffman to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years. This item comes before the body favorable out of council on committee and CDHS. Accordingly, the recommendation is to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt 25C-0106 coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to, assistance, communication, we can do this via unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on your unanimous consent on the motion to adopt.
14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries. Madam Chair.
Sorry, my apologies. And so for moving forward, we will skip over item number five for now and take items number six. Item number six, 25-R-3896, a resolution by committee on council, appointing Mr. Tim Foster to the governing board of the Office of the Inspector General as a representative of the Georgia Chapter of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners for a term of three years. Said term to commence upon approval of this, this resolution and for other purposes. The appoint, the appointee appeared before the committee body today. Accordingly, our recommendation is to adopt.
There's a recommendation to adopt 25R-3896 coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25R-3896.
The vote is open. The vote's close, 14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Great, thank you. Item number 25-R-3897, an amended resolution by committee on council, appointing Ms. Nkoyo Effion Lewis to the Ethics Board as a representative of the League of Women Vote, Voters of Atlanta Fulton County for a term of three years. Said term to commence upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. The appointee appeared before the committee today. Accordingly, the recommendation is to adopt as amended. The amended is based on the fact that we receive the, we see the appointee's base form today.
Madam Chair, this is for Ms. Lewis, correct?
Yes, uh-huh. Nkoyo Effion Lewis.
Yeah, so it's 25R-3898. I think you accidentally said 3897. Just wanted to clarify.
Oh, my apologies. Yep, it's 25-R-3897. I mean, excuse me, 98.
There you go.
It was item seven for us.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. So there's a motion to adopt 25R-3898 coming out of committee. It does not need a second. Is there a discussion on this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt this item.
The vote's close, 14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
This brings us to item number 25-C-0180, dash, excuse me, dash, 0108, item five, an amended communication from the municipal clerk, election superintendent, Corinne A. Lindo, as amended by committee on council, submitting the applications from seven City of Atlanta residents who have applied to fill the District Two vacancies. Colleagues, today we will conduct a ballot vote to fill the District Two council vacancy. For the benefit of those, those following the process, again, I will, I want to briefly outline how appointments to fill a vacancy are handled pursuant to section 2-37.1 of the Atlanta City Charter. First, a vacancy is declared when a council member resigns or otherwise leaves office. The municipal clerk then announces the vacancy and opens an application period. Qualified applicants submit their resumes and statement of interest to the clerk. Those materials are then reviewed by the committee on council, which forwards them to the full council. The full council deliberates and votes and the individual served, selected serves on a temporary basis until the next regular municipal election. Pursuant to section 2-102 subsection A of the city charter, in order to qualify as a candidate for council, a person must be of 18 years of age, be a resident of the City of Atlanta for at least one year immediately preceding the date of filing notice of candidacy, be a qualified elector of the city, and not be an employee of the city. Our colleague Amir Faroki stepped down from his position on August 23rd, 2025, shortly after the municipal clerk announced the vacancy and opened the application period during rich citizens of District Two submitted their resumes and statements of entrance, interest. The applicants are Brandon Clark, Rod Mack, Darian Smith, Tiffany E.M. Simmons, Carden Wyckoff, and Ocean Zoteek. At our September 2nd full council meeting, council member Antonio Lewis also nominated James White and Quanza Hall on the floor during the committee on council standing committee report. These nominations were accepted and their candidacy will be considered pursuant to section 2-37.1 subsection B of the, of the city charter. Subsequently, Mr. Quanza Hall politely declined his nomination. In your binders before you, you have the statement of interest and resumes of all qualified applicants for the vacancy. Some of the applicants are here today to address the body on their vision for District Two. To give them the opportunity, I will shortly make a motion to enter into committee of the whole. Once we hear from the candidates, we will deliberate and cast the vote via paper ballot for a candidate to, to be successful. They must obtain a simple majority that is 50% plus one of the vote from the body. With that being said, before I make the motion to enter into committee on council, we have all, yeah, all statements.
Yes.
Yep, no, I'm saying the statement from Wyckoff has to be.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yep. You have another statement that is coming to you from a candidate that could not join us today. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to enter into the committee of the whole.
There's a motion, there's a motion by Councilmember Collins, seconded by Council or Juan for the explicit purpose of hearing from the applicants for the District Two council position. I would, is there any discussion on the motion moving committee of the whole? We can do this via unanimous consent. Is there any objection? Please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion moving committee of the whole.
14 yeas, zero nays.
Sorry, Madam Clerk. What was the count again?
14 yeas, zero nays.
Yeas, zero nays. The motion moving committee of the whole carries. We're now in committee of the whole. Councilmember Collins.
Great, thank you, Mr. Council President. First we have, for our candidates, each candidate will have, will you instruct that?
I think we should do like we do in regular committee, which is three minutes.
Three minutes. First candidate that we have is Brandon Clark.
You're for the opportunity. My name is Brandon Clark and I'm honored to be considered and serve as interim council member for District Two. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank council member Amir Faroki for his years of dedication and leadership, and he has built a strong foundation on affordable housing, prioritizing budget, and equality centered around governance and government. My commitment is to honor and carry the forward that work. I recognize that this appointment is not full term, but to fulfill the remaining 104 days served for District Two. That short window of time exactly, is exactly why I am the right candidate. My background as a business leader, project manager, tech savvy person, community advocate, and organizer has trained me to move quickly, cut through red tape, and deliver results without delay. I'm prepared to step in on day one and keep District Two priorities on track. Over the next 104 days, my focus will be simple: housing and affordability, economic empowerment, public safety and community trust. This is not about launching new, this is not about launching new long-term projects, but maintaining the momentum, ensuring stability, and being reliable voice for the residents of District Two during that transition. I also want to emphasize that I look forward to working with all council members on this issue. To bring Atlanta safer, stronger, and be more united, my, my commitment is to put the people first and work on both sides of the field, both Democrat and Republicans.
Thank you. We'll reset. Next is Mr. Rod Mack.
Good afternoon, council. Honorable council members, channel 26 viewers watching at home and distinguished guests, I am Rod Mack and I'm honored to stand before you today as a candidate, a 50-year activist and supporter of all things Jackson, King, Young, and Franklin. As a baby grater, I have believed in Atlanta, its people, its resilience, and its creativity all my life. District Two Midtown is the heartbeat of Atlanta, from the historic Fox Theater to the varsity's greasy food where we got heartburn and we loved it. From HBCUs to the Atlanta Symphony, we are communities that deserve justice, safer streets, inclusive job growth, and regional transportation for every Atlanta citizen. As a seasoned candidate, along with my heavenly mentor, Manny Jackson, who shaped Atlanta into what it is today, and left his legacy, a billion-dollar Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. Thank God, there were men and women who made it possible for all of Atlanta to live in the greatest city in America. May God bless Atlanta and I look forward to earning your vote for the City Council November 4th. Vote Mack. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Darian Smith.
Good evening, the council. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Darian Smith. I stand before you as a proud native son shaped from legacy rooted deep from my service in advocacy. My father, Terrance Smith, is civil rights activist who worked tirelessly to support the rights of people in our community. He proposed the bike lanes and also proposed the wheelchair accessible around Georgia in 1994. I'm honored to have been endorsed by the Honorable State Representative Abel Mabel Thomas, and I want to take a moment to thank council member Amir Faraki for building a strong foundation of trust, transparency with the people of District Two. His work gives us something solid to build upon. Now, this interim seat is not about reinventing the wheel. It's about adding to it. District Two needs someone who understands the responsibility of this role, urgency of the work, and the steps it takes to move legislation forward. I understand this term is only 104 days, and that's why the focus and execution need to be critical. I'm already familiar with five key legislation issues that districts, that affect districts too. Aid for business salon cascade roll, emergency home repair donations, vape shop regulations, expedited solar projects, and addressing multifamily housing blight. My first 30 to 45 days will focus on advancing the priorities already placed before council members for rocky departure. While staying present and engaged with my community to make sure we are acting truly matters, I will also help serve my community as well. And just as important, I will be rubbing elbows with my fellow council members in sister districts one, three, four, five, and six, to make sure District Two is aligned with the greater vision of Atlanta as a whole. There are three principles I live by: always take the extra mile, because when you go further than others, you give yourself space to think and make the better decisions. I always value my time and other people's time, because time is something we cannot get back. And last but not least, let's always focus on the control of us. We can never reach for something that we can't control. Always make sure we focus on what we can control and then look forward to finishing those that we can't. I'm ready to bring these values to City Hall, to work shoulder-to-shoulder with my colleagues, and to ensure District Two continues to thrive during this transition. So I'll leave you with this: if you want someone who would not waste any single day, who will be honored to rule the foundation laid upon us, please vote, Darian Smith.
Next up is Tiffany M.
Good afternoon, council members, and happy birthday to Councilmember Boone. My birthday was last week. My name is Tiffany M. Simmons, and I am honored to be considered for appointment to represent District Two on the Atlanta City Council. As a longtime resident of our city, a practicing attorney for over 16 years, and the founder of Simmons Law, I have dedicated my career to advocating for fairness, opportunity, and justice in Atlanta. I've built my law firm from the ground up into a multimillion-dollar practice that serves clients in business, criminal defense, entertainment, and personal injury law. That work has given me a deep experience in navigating complex legal and policy issues, negotiating on behalf of diverse stakeholders, and making tough decisions with lasting impact. Equally important, it has grounded me in the reality that the policies we adopt as leaders must be practical, transparent, and centered on the people that we serve. My priorities as a council member will focus on ensuring responsible economic development that benefits all residents, protecting housing affordability while supporting infrastructure and transportation improvements, and advancing public safety solutions rooted in accountability and prevention. I am also deeply committed to expanding opportunities for young people, small businesses, and cultural projects that showcase Atlanta's legacy and potential, such as the Black Lawyer Museum Initiative I founded to preserve the history and inspire future generations. District Two represents the heart of Atlanta, and it deserves leadership that listens, engages, and acts decisively. If given the privilege to serve, I will bring my proven record of leadership to City Hall, working every day to ensure that District Two remains a thriving, inclusive, and forward-looking part of our city. I started my firm on the foundation of love, community, respect, and integrity, and I look forward to bringing that to the council. Thank you for your consideration and for the opportunity to present my vision for District
And we have Ocean Zoteek. Mr. Ocean Zoteek joining us.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, Councilmember Collins, for holding the community engagement forum the other day. It was so great to see so many of our community members coming out to have those critical conversations about our community and in, at the pool, at the aquatic center, no less. So, thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council, and residents of Atlanta. My name is Ocean Zoteek, and I'm an HOA president and member of NPUM. And I'm here today because District Two deserves leadership it can count on, not months from now, but right now. This interim appointment is not about politics, it's about stability. Every week without strong leadership is a week that our neighborhoods risk falling behind. I know this district because I have lived in. I've walked its street, spoken with families. I've walked its street, spoken with families, again, serving on my HOA Renaissance Park and NPU, tackling the very issues our council faces: affordable housing, public safety, neighborhood vitality. I followed the work on blighted properties, the Edgewood Corridor Safety Task Force, and I'm prepared to continue all of that momentum on day one. District Two is the heartbeat of Atlanta, from the Belt Line to Georgia State, from Centennial Olympic Park to the King Historic District. This is where our city's history and its future meet. The journey of the Old Fourth Ward and of Atlanta is very personal to me. My mother, a Cuban immigrant and small business owner, grew up there in the 1970s. I was born at Georgia Baptist Hospital. Atlanta is not just where I live, it's a part of who I am. Courtney Smith is running a strong campaign, and I believe she will be the next elected council member. But until then, District Two needs a bridge, someone who already knows these issues, has these relationships, and can get to work immediately. I'm ready to be that bridge. So I urge you to appoint me as interim council member. I will serve with integrity, urgency, and dedication, protecting our progress and keeping District Two moving forward until the voter's choice is sworn in. Thank you so much.
Those are the candidates we have that speak with us today. You have their binders with all the candidates' interests and resumes.
Chair Collins had to entertain a motion to move out of committee of the whole.
Give us five, give us a few minutes. We're just trying, we have to verify one.
Oh, gotta verify.
One second.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, let me just verify that all members voted. Is that correct? That all the members voted? Yes. All right. Chair Collins.
Yes.
What is the outcome? Do we have an outcome?
Uh, yes, we do. So, Mr. Council President and my colleagues, we do have a majority, a some majority vote of 50% plus one. We have Carden Wykoff with nine votes, Darian Smith with four votes, and Brandon Clark with one vote.
Given that it's eight vote majority, like everything else on council, nine votes, that means that Ms. Carden Wykoff will receive the appointment for District Two. I just want to take one moment and thank everyone who applied for this position. Thank you for taking the time and the interest in serving the city. Chair Collins.
Yes. Again, just want to thank you so much, Mr. Council President. We will, Madam Clerk and the clerk's office have those votes and will coordinate with Carden Wykoff accordingly to get her, yep, to administer her oath, so she, so that she can resume the role as our new District Two, District Two Councilmember for the next 104 days.
One other, one other note, because this question may come up, I just wanted to say for my colleagues in the record, just to make committee service run more smoothly, Ms. Wykoff will serve in the same three appointments that Councilmember Faroke previously had. There'll be no changes to committees. She will simply slot into those three appointments.
Name of three committees or just?
It's a, she'll be on Transportation, zoning, and Committee on Council.
Got it. Great. Thank you. With that being said, I entertain, we're out of committee of the whole, right? Yeah, we're out. Yes. So, I need to make a motion to ratify, yeah, make a, I make a motion to ratify any actions. Okay. Not even communications. Okay. All right. Well, the results will be certified by the clerk. Thank you, my colleagues. That, I think that does in fact, yes, that effects conclude our report. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next up will be the zoning committee. Chair Westmoreland.
We do not have a report.
Thank you.
Hey.
Next. Next will be the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Chair Boone. And a happy birthday to Chair Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. It does feel good to be loved. Thank y'all so much. Cupcakes, balloons, I see flowers. I am so grateful. Thank you. Thank you, President Shipman. The Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee Standing Committee Report is found on page 41 on the agenda. We have one item, colleagues. Communications 25-C-0107, a communication from Donald T. Panovi, CPA Chair Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit report, Atlanta Police Department body worn cameras, follow-up, motion to accept and file.
This motion, Committee to Accept and File 25C-0107, does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept and file this item? Given that this is communication, we do this via unanimous consent and objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the counter unanimous consent on the motion to accept and file.
Twelve yeas, zero nays?
Twelve yeas, zero nays. The motion to accept and file carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Boone. Next up will be City Utilities Committee Chair Lewis. And I believe that we will be moving into committee of the whole to undertake some business.
Thank you, President. Mr. President, for today's report, we must enter into committee of the whole to conduct our business. Please turn to page 44 of your full council agenda. Motion to, I move to enter into committee of whole.
The motion by Councilmember Lewis entered the committee of the whole. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. In discussion on the motion, move to committee of the whole. We do this via unanimous consent without objection or any objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the counter unanimous consent to move to committee of the whole.
Twelve yeas, zero nays?
Twelve yeas, zero nays. Motion carries. We're now in committee of the whole. Chair Lewis.
Okay. Sound first read, no action taken. 2501517, an ordinance by City Council, City Utilities Committee waiving Part II Code of Ordinance, General Ordinances, Chapter II Administration, Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta City Code, to authorize the mayor or his desert need to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement FC 10469C, Water Distribution System Rehabilitation and Improvement Upgrades at Hemp Hill Pump Station with Rockdale Pipeline, Integral Municipal Services Corporation Joint Venture, retroactively effective beginning April 9, 2025, through the execution of the Sixth Amendment on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management to extend the term of agreement for a period of 18 months, retroactively effective from April 9, 2025 through April 8, 2026, to add funds in the agreement in an amount not to exceed $6,443,285,67. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund departmental organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Ordinance for second reading. 2501500, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond waiving Part II, Code of Ordinance, General Ordinances, Chapter II Administration, Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinance, to authorize the mayor or his desert need to exercise the second renewal option for agreement RFPC 1200560A, annual contract for sanitary sewer repairs with Ruby Collins SE, joint venture on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year, retroactively effective from September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2026, for time only, to authorize the mayor or his desert need to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement, retroactively effective beginning September 1, 2025, through the, through the exercise of the second renewal option and for other purposes. Move to approve.
It's a motion to adopt 25-O-1500. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. The motion to adopt 25-O-1500.
One moment. The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. A ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond waiving 2501501. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond waiving Part II Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter II Administration, Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, to authorize the mayor or his desert need to exercise the second renewal option for the agreement, RFPC 1200560B, annual contract for sanitary sewer repair with Rockdale Pipeline and Integral Municipal Services Corporation JV Agreement on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year, retroactively effective from September 11, 2025 through September 10, 2026, for time only to authorize the mayor or his desert need to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement, retroactively effective beginning September 11, 2025, through the exercise of the second renewal option and for other purposes. Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
This is motion to adopt 25-O-1501 by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
2501502, an ordinance by Councilmember Ishay Collins, authorizing the mayor or his desert need to execute the first agreement for special procurement agreement, SPS 1220376, solid waste parcels surveying and billing software support and maintenance with international system strategies incorporated on behalf of the Department of Public Works, to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for the period not to extend nine months, to waive Article 10 of the City of Atlanta Procurement and Real Estate Code to add funding in the amount not to exceed the $315,000.0 sent to ratify services in connection with the agreement, retroactively effective September 29, 2025, through the exercise of the First Degree Amendment of contracted work to be charged and paid from the fund departmental organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
This is motion to adopt 25-O-1502 by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
2501503, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis waiving Part II Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter II, Division 14 of the Atlanta, Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division 14 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, authorizing the exchange of property at 1370 Howell Mill Road Northwest for property owned by the Atlanta Beltline Incorporated at 1396 Howell Mill Road Northwest and 1400 Howell Mill Road Northwest, authorizing the grant of the temporary construction easements and permanent, permanent easements across city-owned property located at the 1370 Howell Mill Road Northwest and authorizing the purchase of the city of Atlanta's interest in certain property located at 1370 Howell Mill Road Northwest. So, as we provide the construction, provide for the construction of the Atlanta Beltline Project and related improvements to the intersection of the Howell Mill Road Northwest and Traybridge Avenue Northwest, to authorize the mayor or his desert need or the chief procurement officer or her desert need to execute and/or deliver all other documents necessary to complete the exchange easements and sale and transfer of the aforementioned property, authorizing the revenue from the disposition to be disposition in the fund and diligence closing costs signage, demolition, site security and stabilization, fencing and other site development costs to be paid from the fund and account information listed herein and for other purposes. This legislation is dual referred item and will be forwarded to the Community Development Human Services Committee pending a City Utilities Committee recommendation. Recommend motion to hold. Hold in committee.
The motion to hold, there's a motion to hold in the CUC Committee, correct? Councilmember Lewis, that's the motion?
I withdraw, yes.
This is motion by Councilmember Lewis to hold in CUC. Is there a second?
I withdraw my motion. I'll let, also, I will draw my motion. I'll let Mr. Hillis make a motion.
We in committee of the whole?
We are in committee of the whole.
I would like to hear from the Watershed Department, given this is an administrative paper that was given to me and is very important to the Beltline and my district, and no one has bothered to say not one word to me from the administration or from the Department of Watershed Management.
There's someone here from Watershed.
Everyone at once.
Who'd like to, who'd like to speak to this? We are in committee of the whole.
I'll wait until someone from the administration can come speak to this.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. Good afternoon.
Well, good afternoon. Assistant Commissioner Hugh Smith, Department of Watershed Management. I'm not very versed in this, so I would ask the opportunity for us to, Mr. Bus is not here today. He is the primary responsible individual for this, so I'd ask just for time for us to convene and get back with you all.
Thank you, sir. I will actually make a motion to approve, given this is a dual referred item and there does need to be further review and more documents. This will get it through the City Utilities Committee and it will be present in front of the CDHS Committee this upcoming committee week. So, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
This is motion to approve by Councilmember Hillis, seconded by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve this item? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25-O-1503.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move over to resolutions. In 25R-383637, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boom to amend Resolution 25R-3221, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on March 17, 2025, and approved per City Charter Section 2403 on March 18, 2025, to clarify the not, the not to exceed amount of the contract and the city's share of that cost and for other purposes, motion to approve.
This is motion to adopt 25R-3837 by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
One moment. The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
25R-3838, a resolution by Councilmember Ishay Collins, authorizing the mayor or his desert need to exercise the third renewal option under IFBS 1210276, Trace Organic Laboratory Services with the Air Friends Environment Testing Southeast LLC on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year effective October 5, 2025 through October 4, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $138,000.0 all contracted work to be charged and paid from the fund department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook to adopt 25R-3838. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Motion to adopt.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
25R-38948, a resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his desert need to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, and contract item agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for the purpose of adjusting water and sewer infrastructure that conflicts with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation's street enhancement and intersection improvements projects at SR-714 Industrial Boulevard from 7549 Lakeview Court to CR-2036 West Park Place and SR-70 Fulton Industrial Boulevard at Cascade Road in Fulton County, in an amount not to exceed $153,259.24. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
This is motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook to approve 25R-3894. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Motion to adopt.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries. Oh, Councilmember Westmoreland is also an aye. He was just slow.
That's fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to adopt carries.
Thank you. 25R-3895, a resolution by City Utilities Committee, authorizing the mayor or his desert need to execute an agreement for IFBCON-DWM 25021250143, Eep Valley for the Halls Constructed Wetland Project with Integral Municipal Services Corporation, Rockdale Pipeline, Incorporated Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of, to commence on, on the date. A notice to proceed is issued for 18 months in an amount not to exceed $11,717,733.0 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. I pro, motion to hold. We're waiting on the Ipro report from NDOTP approval.
This is motion to hold in committee, correct, in CUC, by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold this item in committee? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to hold this item in committee.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to hold this item in committee carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair Lewis, just before you continue, I just want to underscore one thing that Councilmember Hillis referred to, and that is that 25O-1503, though approved here, is a dual referer. It will also go to CDHS. So, it has been approved in CUC, but it will still show up in CDHS. Is that correct?
Yep.
Not today. Not today. It will go to CDHS Committee and be heard there. So, I just want to clarify that for everybody. Yep. All right. Councilmember, Chair Lewis, please proceed.
I now make a motion to exit the committee of the whole?
There's a motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook to exit committee of the whole. Is there any discussion on the motion to exit committee of the whole? Hearing none, we do this via unanimous consent without objection or any objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the counter unanimous consent to exit committee of the whole.
Fourteen.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to exit committee of the whole carries. We're now back in regular session. Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to, I move to adopt all actions taken in committee of the whole in gross.
This is motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Shook to approve all the actions taken in committee of the whole. Is there any discussion on this motion to approve all items? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to approve all actions done in committee of the whole.
The vote is open? The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? It's not working? Okay, let's try, all right. One moment, please, let me try again. Please, there's not, will everyone vote? Can we try again? The vote is open. Ms. Westmoreland, what is your vote? Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt the actions carries.
Mr. President, I would like to make, make, to send 25R3837 to the mayor's office post haste, I'd like to make a motion to.
There's a motion by Councilmember Lewis to send 25R3837 to the mayor's office post haste, is there a second? Sorry? We have. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hillis, is there any discussion on the motion move post, this item post haste? We do this for unanimous consent without objection, any objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on, unanimous consent on the motion with this item post haste.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion move post haste carries.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. Next, we will move to CDHS, Chair Winston.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is the item that was pulled off of consent on page six, item number six, 25-01264CDP25007, a substitute ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the 2025 Plan A, City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, so as to re-designate property located at 1138 Glenwood Avenue Southeast from the low-density residential development pattern designation to the medium-density mixed-use development pattern designations and for other purposes. Colleagues, I'd like to make a motion to adverse.
There's a motion by Councilmember Winston to adverse 2501264, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Norwood, is there any discussion on the motion to adverse this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adverse.
The vote is open. The votes close, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adverse carries.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Transportation Committee, Chair Amos.
This is, Mr. President, we'll be dealing with an item that was pulled off of consent as well. That number is 25-0-1496. That's item 16 off page nine. We'll be doing a substitute that'll change the caption to make revisions to the legislation to clarify the terms of the renewal option, so I make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by, sorry, who seconded that? Councilmember Norwood, to bring forth substitute for 2501496, is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth substitute? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote, motion to bring forth substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Bond, what is your vote? Councilmember Wong?
Councilmember Wong's an aye.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion to bring forth substitute carries.
Thank you, substitute ordinance authorizing the mayor his designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to retroactively exercise the renewal option for agreement number listed, concession, secret shopping prices, and compliance services agreement with the customer point of view, Inc., to monitor concessions, operations at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for a total period of two years and the amount not to exceed $580,000. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the account listed herein and for other purposes, most to adopt that substitute.
There's a motion to adopt 2401496, a substitute by Councilmember Amos, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt as substituted, Councilmember Wong?
All right, so the substitute that we were forwarded earlier today actually still has a $290,000 in the caption, so I'm curious of why it's suddenly changed to 580 between 2:41 and 4:39 PM today.
So that would definitely take someone from the administration to answer that question.
Because the whereas they added, it actually said with no additional funding required to.
Somebody from Finance, perhaps, help us clarify the amount?
Finance hasn't been made aware as to why this change was made.
Then, without that, I mean, explanation, I'm not throwing another $300,000 at this, I'll make a substitute motion, motion to refer back to committee so we can get to the bottom of this.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Wong to refer this back to the Transportation Committee, seconded by Councilwoman Bakhtiari. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this item back to committee? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to refer this item back to committee carries.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Finally today, Finance Exec Committee, Chair Shook.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one matter today, 2501505, requires a substitute, and I'll move to bring it forward.
Actually, could I, could you actually withdraw that and have a motion to adopt and then bring forth the substitute that came forward with no recommendation? So we need to get it on the floor.
That motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shook, 2501505, is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Bakhtiari, is there any discussion, Councilmember Shook?
Thank you, this is.
What the substitute?
Yeah, this is an ordinance by Shook, a substitute by the Atlanta City Council, amending the FY26 general fund budget by anticipating and appropriating, appropriating an amount not to exceed $2,933,155.00 from the council president and council member carryforward accounts with a net amount of $2,930,544.72 to be returned to the council president and council member carryforward accounts for the true-up of the FY26 carryforward balances and for other purposes.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to bring forth the substitute. Move by Councilmember Bakhtiari, seconded by Councilwoman Wong, any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Hillis, what is your vote? The votes close, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries. We're now back to the motion to adopt as substituted. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt 2501505 as substituted? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
Councilmember Bond, what is your vote? The votes close, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt as substitute carries.
That is all.
Thank you, Chair Shook. That concludes the reports of the standing committees today. We will now move to personal papers.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, appointing members to serve on the City of Atlanta's Reparations Study Commission and for other purposes. Whereas on November 6, 2023, the Atlanta City Council adopted Resolution 23-R-4351 to establishing the City of Atlanta's Reparations Study Commission, the commission charging 14 entities with assigning 11 voting members and three ex-official members. Whereas in May 5 of 2025, the Atlanta City Council adopted ordinance 25-0-1204, amending the structure of the commission to include three additional entities thereby adding two voting members and one ex-official member. And whereas the commission was established to research and document the City of Atlanta's historical role in the legal discrimination of African-American residents and to recommend potential remedies to address the resulting economic, educational, health, and social disparities. And whereas the appointments of the designated members is necessary to ensure the commission can begin its work and fulfill the immediate, immediately assigned to and by the Atlanta City Council, now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that the following individuals are hereby appointed to serve as members of the City of Atlanta's Reparations Study Commission. One, representing the mayor of the City of Atlanta, Dr. Sheila Fleming. Two, representing the Atlanta City Council at large post one, Anne Hill Bond, no relation. Three, representing the Atlanta City Council at large post two, Ray Jones. Four, representing Clark Atlanta University, Dr. Kirk Young. Five, representing Georgia State University, Professor Anika, Anika Lee Mosia. Six, representing the Georgia State University, Dr. Maurice Hopson. Seven, representing Morehouse College, Dr. Adria Welcher. Eight, representing Morris Brown College, Dr. Skip Mason. Nine, representing Spelman College, Dr. Cynthia Neil Spence. Ten, representing the National Coalition of Blacks for Reparations in America, Mr. Jomoke, Mr. Jomoke. Eleven, representing the ACLU, Mr. Christopher Bruce. Twelve, representing the National African-American Reparations Committee, Richard Rose. And be it finally resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolution and conflict herewith are hereby waived to the extent of such conflict, I'd like to move approval.
There's a motion by Councilmember Bond to adopt Elm 38808, is there a second?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to refer to committee, please.
I need a second first. Seconded by Councilmember Lewis. All right, is there any discussion? Councilmember Norwood?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to refer to committee, please.
Which committee? Which committee, I assume, you got to put a committee in there, or is it?
Committee on Council.
There's a motion by Councilmember Norwood to refer to committee on council, is there a second for that motion? Who seconded, sorry? Seconded by Collins. Is there a discussion on the motion to refer this item to the committee on council?
Yes, I would like.
Councilmember Bond.
I would like to vehemently, verily, adamantly oppose that motion. This committee has been in the works for over a year, and we are trying to get the work of the committee done. There's simply no reason to refer this back to committee. There's no possible rationale, no logic. There's no reason to refer this back. We have made full commission appointments before and often when we're trying to stand up blue ribbon commissions, regular commissions, all types of groups to do the work. This commission actually has a public hearing scheduled for this month.
Yeah.
And we're putting this resolution forward so that all official members will have their quorum and that they will be able to act as a full body representing to the public. The meeting is already scheduled, there are experts coming in from around the country, and they've been working on this for more than a year. Because of circumstances beyond our control and even the control of those who have been appointed, the appointments have come in very slowly, and we're seeking to resolve that so that we can have the full body in place for our meeting this month before the public. So I would urge our colleagues not to support that motion to refer.
Councilmember Bakhtiari, discussion on the motion to refer?
Thank you. One, I do want to thank Councilmember Bond for taking initiative on this because it is an extraordinarily important committee. I did have a question because from my knowledge, has there ever been a precedent, is there precedent for one council member doing immediate, appointing an entire committee in one swing? I only asked because I was working on finding an appointment, I'd asked a few people in my, my district, and I didn't know this was happening, and this is the first I'm hearing about it. Very important committee to fill in, but I had actually been working on my own appointments, so I didn't quite understand, and from my understanding, something like this hasn't never been done before, so I'm worried about the precedent. And then, third, I don't, I feel like it would be fair to allow the district to council member to weigh in, and they have not been appointed yet. So those are just some of the points I wanted to mention slash question I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Well, I will respond, yes, this has been done before. We would not be setting a precedent, this is not unusual. We have set up commissions where we have waived the process for appearing before committees. Some of these members have been appointed, some of them haven't, and that has been the issue, that we do not have enough for a quorum, and we have a public, we're trying to get the work of the commission underway that has technically been stood up over a year ago. But because of the appointing agencies being delayed for whatever reason, these people have not, they've been participating, but they have not been officially appointed. So, and so they do not have an official quorum. And so with this action, they will now have a quorum. We have a public meeting scheduled, which is a part of their mandate for this month, later in, next week in fact. And so we need to have the meeting, the members appointed so that we do have a, so they're acting officially when we conduct the public meeting. And so, yes, this has been done before, and you're not setting a precedent or breaking any rules of the council. Well, you have the right, as the author in the creation of your commission, to make the appointments any way that you wish. You can appoint all of them at once, you can have them come before individual committees, you can structure that appointment process any way that you desire.
Councilmember Bakhtiari, done? Councilmember Collins?
Yes, no, I appreciate.
Yes, no, I appreciate that because I know, I mean, we've been working on staffing, you know, we've been working on the appointments for this commit, this, for the Reparation Commission and many more. So I think my referral, my referral back was on the basis of knowing that there was a couple of positions that are still vacant. But I don't, I do agree with you, Mr. Councilmember Bond. It doesn't preclude the work from being started. And I know there's been a cry, cry out to get that work started for a while. I think my question is, I know, Councilwoman Norwood, you made the motion to refer, just wanted to hear more about your basis for that reason. For me, I looked at it as a procedural piece, but I do understand the delay in this work and many of the profess, many of the individuals on this list have been waiting for this work to get started, so. I defer there.
It's for immediate consideration. I think it should go back to committee. It should be discussed there with all of these appointments, none of which we had seen until right now. So I think that's important. That's why I'm doing it.
So the commission, but for my, so it's been what, two years? Two years?
Almost, yes.
Yeah, I think almost two years for staff, you know, for not, let me stop saying staffing, for appointing individuals to this, to this Reparations Study Commission. So if we were to refer back then, I, as chair of the committee, would be inclined to move quickly to get for Lawrence, for Councilmember Bakhtiari and even post three nomination and to move the work forward. So I think, you know, if it doesn't preclude us from being able to do that, but we can at least get the committee started, I'm going to withdraw my motion to refer. Because, Council President, that, you know. Well, I second it. So I'm going to withdraw my second to that motion to refer. Because, Mr. Council President, just so that I'm clear, we can get the commit, we can get the commission going, but still be able to appoint to fill those vacancies, correct? Oh, he's.
Well, there'll be a.
There's a, there's a, there's a withdrawal of the motion, of the second to the motion to refer. So let me call again. Is there a second to Councilmember Norwood's motion to refer? There is not a second, therefore there is no motion to refer. We're back to the seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. Okay, so there is a second. So we're still on the motion to refer. Councilmember Lewis? And then, I see.
And I'm glad that is, I think if somebody turned off my microphone, I've been pressing the green thing, it hasn't worked all day. Please, uh. But I would say that similar to Councilmember Collins, similar to Councilmember Bond, I have only voted for immediate consideration in favor of it one time since I've been on council and this will be the second time that I would do it. And this is important to not only the City of Atlanta, when you think about the city that we live in, understanding that Mr. Julian Bond has been fighting this. I remember when he first put the legislation in, I tried to sign on to it. So I am in favor of us sending this through for immediate consideration because of the, we just haven't done it yet. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Bond.
Thank you.
Councilmember Westmoreland?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my understanding, having just reviewed the originating legislation, that the appointment for line number two, I have two questions. One, it says representing, line number three, it says representing the Atlanta City Council at large post two, Ray Jones. I have two questions. One, it's my understanding that that appointee is not just the post two at large appointee, but the districts five, six, seven, and eight, and the council post two person. So that's my first clarifying question. My second is, I don't know who Mr. Jones is. And so I was wondering if you could enlighten me before we vote on this.
Councilmember Bond?
Well, Mr. Jones is a member who's been participating underneath that, that particular appointment since the beginning. We have members that have been participating and they're listed here, but the appointing agencies haven't always been cooperative in the way of responding to make sure these persons have gotten their official letter or notation from, to the clerk. And so this is what we have worked out as a solution to have these individuals appointed because they have been working throughout this time, many of them. But officially, they do not have a quorum. So their work, though they have been working, is not official work because they don't have a quorum. So this is our desire to make sure all are appointed so that they have a quorum. They've scheduled a public meeting at some expense. They're flying in experts from around the country within the next two weeks. And so these are citizens that despite the appointing agencies, not always, and I don't have the list before me exactly who is and who isn't. But this was what we resolved to do in cooperation and conversation to try to get it resolved.
Received. And I do not know if Councilmembers Bakhtiari, Juan, Shook, or Norwood know the person that we are putting up on this piece of legislation, but I think that speaks to why it might do us a little bit of benefit to take ten more business days before we move forward.
Well, if you have reservations.
Councilmember Bond, that wasn't a question. This is not, you don't have a floor. He had the floor. Councilmember Hellis?
Sorry.
I just wanted to get the opinion and clarity from law if the Committee on Counsel or the Community Development and Human Services Committee would be the appropriate committee to refer the paper to.
Good afternoon. Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law, in review of Section 2-135, which is the jurisdiction of Standing Committees in the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and subsection D of that code section. I believe the Committee on Community Development and Human Services would be the appropriate committee to have jurisdiction over this matter rather than the Committee on Counsel.
Thank you. So I would, I guess, make a friendly amendment for that correction if it is okay with the mover and the secondor?
Yes.
Councilmember Norwood, Councilmember Westmoreland?
Yep.
All right, so the, the motion to refer is now to refer to the CDHS committee. With, is there?
If there are no objections.
Right, it's still move to amend, and I will object.
Okay. So there, so there's a motion, so technically this is a motion to amend the, the referral. So we're not going to do it via unanimous consent. So is there any discussion on the motion to change where it's going to be referred?
Yes.
Just change where it's going to be referred?
I mean.
That's the only thing we're discussing.
Yeah, that's fine, I know.
Let's move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to amend, to change the referral to, the motion to refer to CDHS.
Before we do that, I do have, it's okay just for my clarity because I'm looking at the base report and I do want to, so I would have imagined more conversation about.
It's not, it's not germane at the moment. We'll get there.
Okay.
But just let this vote go through to where we're referring to.
Will everyone please vote?
Why, I had another comment. I had my hand, I had my hand up.
That makes sense now, like, it's crazy. It does, because the base report shows all of these positions are vacant. I mean, I think the public should. It is debatable.
We're only voting on the motion to amend to refer to CDHS.
Your vote?
I have a conflict of interest, abstain.
It's not appropriate.
I, I, I can't state it. Oh, yeah, I know. My, my conflict of interest is my strong belief that this is unnecessary. This is completely unnecessary.
Will everyone please vote? Mr. Bond, what is your vote?
Abstain for my principles.
Will everyone please vote?
Councilmember Amos?
The votes close, thirteen yays, one abstention?
Thirteen yays, one abstention. Councilmember Bond, would you like to state your abstention reason?
For my principles. That this is referring and it all is completely unnecessary. And it sends the wrong message to people who have volunteered for the last two years to advance the work of this commission.
I appreciate that, but that's not a conflict, so you'll have to vote. The abstention's out of order. You can vote yea or nay.
Well, I'm not going to be difficult.
I'm sorry?
I'm not going to be, I'll say yes.
Okay.
So fourteen yays, zero nays. Fourteen yays, zero nays. The motion to amend the referral carries. We're now back to the motion to refer and now it's to CDHS. I'm going to go to Councilmember Collins and Councilmember Bond's been waiting patiently. Councilmember Collins? To refer.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just make it quick. I mean, I think this has just really been a good conversation to understand where things are. I mean, this, looking at the base report, this commission was enacted in November of 2023. And I thought, I, I thought you guys knew these individuals on here. Thanks for, thanks, Councilman Westmoreland, for lifting that up. So again, if Department of Law thinks it's before, it should be before CDHS, let's do that. And then I would just say, let's move forward, getting these nominations secure because to Councilmember Bond's point, the work has been happening. And I think people are under the assumption, I am, if I did not look at the base report and see all of the vacancies from the various universities, I was under the assumption that these positions had been appointed and secured because the work has been happening. So I don't know what that looks like, Mr. Council President, or I guess it's to the purview of CDHS to provide a definitive timeline to get those nominations to you all for your consideration. Thank you.
I defer.
Councilmember Bond?
Well, I would just respond to that. If they're on, if the post three, I'm sorry, the post two at large grouping is uncomfortable with the person that is being appointed, we can remove that person. We have the ability to do that right here and now. But there are citizens of this city who have been giving their time and they've been dedicated to this work and they want to be official when they bring the world to this chamber in a couple of weeks. And I don't think that that's a lot to ask. Most of these people are scholars, professors, people of great letters, of great research and great reputation. And as a matter of fact, I won't wait for someone else to do it. I'll remove that person. I'll make a motion now to remove the post to it, post to at large nomination. I make that officially.
There's a motion by.
To remove that, to remove that appointment. Well, since I've been overruled by the.
You have to, you have to dispose, just for the record, we have to dispose.
I will, I will make that motion to remove that person. And then we can work with the post to at large grouping to find someone who is suitable for that position so that the work of the committee can go on in an official capacity. If this is referred back to committee, it will be after the scheduled public hearing that they have worked so hard to put together. And these are people who want to be legitimate, who want to be acknowledged by the city and want to have their work to be represented as official. And I would hope colleagues, and I'm just ask you, beg you to consider to allow them to do that. So I would not support the motion to refer. If the, if the motion to refer is voted down, I'll make an immediate motion to remove that person.
Other discussion on the motion to refer this item. Councilmember Norwood?
Yes, colleagues, we are now, Mr. Bond has referred to one person. There are twelve representatives. I would like to know how and who the people are who have quote, "worked so hard," they have not been identified to us today. So who are the people and what have they actually been doing? The next question is, we have two people representing Georgia State University. Is Georgia State University, did they make these appointments? And are they aware of these appointments? We have representatives from Morehouse, Morris, Brown, and Spelman, and Clark Atlanta. Are they, are those universities aware of these appointments? Did they make these appointments? If they did not, and so I need to know where each of these appointments came from and who the people are. I'd like to have them identified as to who's been working on this and what that work has been.
Well, I'll be glad to answer that for you. Thank you, Mr. President. First, Ms. Sheila Fleming. She is a representative of Delta Sigma Theta Atlanta Alumni Chapter. It is because of the work of the Delta Sigma Theta Atlanta Alumni Chapter, one of their national planks of that sorority, to seek to set up reparations committees, commissions in every city where they have representation. She is their nomination and they are aware. Representing the Atlanta City Council Post One at Large, Ms. Anne Hill Bond, she is a member of the Fulton County Reparations Commission and is my nomination. She has worked in this space for many years and in other capacities with historical initiatives in this city and beyond. We're skipping post two. Ray Jones is a person who's also been active in this space dealing with reparations and civil, civil rights. But he'll be removed if the, if this is vote, issue is voted down. Dr. Kirk Young is an employee and professor at Clarky Atlanta University. The university is aware that he is appointed. They made, we got the recommendation from the university. Professor Umoja from Georgia State University is a nomination from Georgia State University. He works in the African-American Studies Division at Georgia State. They are aware that he has been nominated and has been participating. Next is Dr. Maurice Hopson, who is a noted historian of international fame. He's also affiliated with Georgia State University. Georgia State is aware and has nominated him to participate. Next is, of course, Dr. Skip Mason, who is the, I believe he's no longer acting. I believe he is the appointed president of the Interdenominational Theological Center. He is a historian of international note and has worked in this space and others. Dr. Cynthia Neil Spence is the nominee from Spelman College. They are aware that she is participating and she has a great historical pedigree as well. Next, let me see, who's next? Representing the National Coalition of Blacks in Reparations is Jomoke. He is a longtime, thirty-year-plus activist in the reparations space, a graduate of Georgia State University, a native of Atlanta, and he has an international reputation in this space. Next is, let's see. Representing the ACLU, Mr. Christopher Bruce. He is their appointee. They are aware that he would be representing them on, on the commission. Next is, who's that? Mr. Richard Rose, representing the National African-American Reparations Commission, a national organization. He is a former president of the Atlanta NAACP and a longtime civil rights activist. And I believe that's it. I don't think I missed anyone. The issue about their appointments has been is getting the information to the clerk on several of the nominees and. on several of the nominees and getting them sworn. That has been the linchpin. And so they have been working, they've been meeting monthly, and some with subcommittee, subcommittees probably biweekly, almost for the last two years. And so we're seeking to make them all official. So when they stand before the public, they can have a legal quorum at their public meeting.
Other discussion on the motion to refer. Councilmember Hillis.
In regards to the appointments, I will just ask the municipal clerk if they have received all 12 of these nomination letters from the appointing authorities.
We have not.
Thank you.
And that has been part of the issue. The school has acknowledged that they're going to appoint individuals. All have not received their letters. Some have, some have been sworn, some haven't. But they've been working for two years, and this body has the power to appoint them. So I just simply ask that you would help citizens who are working on their own time, not being compensated, not being paid, that volunteer, believe in this, and want to continue to work forthrightly on the mission for which they've been assigned. So I would hope that you would vote down the motion to refer.
Other discussion? I actually have to step out of the chair to ask a question regarding this motion. So Councilmember Hillis, you'll need to step in the chair, and you'll need to stay in the chair regarding this question. Thank you. I don't really, I didn't have any notion of this coming, but one of the two appointments that currently exists on the reparations committee is actually my appointment, Larry Riley, who I made when this first came through. My question, I guess, to Councilmember Bond is, what happens to his service? I don't see him listed here.
He's already been appointed.
So just for clarification, the immediate consideration is in addition to the appointments as they exist currently?
Yes.
Okay. So this is not the, just for my clarifications, this is not the full list. This is in the addition list. And I believe there are, understood, but I believe there are two appointments. Mr. Eric Wilder, which is an appointment the clerk's nodding, and then my appointment, Larry Riley. So those two would remain plus these.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will turn the floor back over to you. After the vote. All right. Thank you. All right. No further questions. Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote on the motion to refer to CDHS.
The vote is open?
Nay.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Ten yays, four nays.
Thank you. The vote is complete. Ten yays, four nays. The item is referred to CDHS. Thank you, colleagues. And at this time, I will turn the floor back over to President Shipman.
Thank you. I believe there are no other items for immediate consideration, but we do have an motion that wants to be made for the floor before we get to the referral. So I will ask Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, colleagues. Since we had the Transportation Committee report, I've been in communication with representatives from the airport. This is on 2501496. There was actually a mistake in what was forwarded to us today as the substitute. The clean version did reflect the increased amount. It was the redline version. It was the wrong one that was sent. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to reconsider this, because in my opinion, it should be ready to go. So a motion to reconsider.
There's a motion to reconsider by Councilmember Juan. He can make that motion because he was in the winning side of the vote. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Takes a majority vote to reconsider, so Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Again, if you vote aye, you're voting to reconsider this matter. If you vote nay, you're voting not to reconsider the matter. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to reconsider carries. So we are now reconsidering 2501496. Councilmember Juan.
Mr. President, colleagues, just to be safe, I'm going to make a motion to substitute again, just to make sure that we are putting in the correct version of it with the correct amount of $580,000, right? And so I'll make a motion to substitute.
There's a motion by Councilmember Juan to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? Hearing now, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote, and the motion to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? Mr. Shook, what is your vote?
Aye.
The vote is closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. Motion to bring forth the substitute carries. There's a motion by Councilmember Juan to adopt a substitute, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item as substituted? Hearing now, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Motion to adopt substituted.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt a substitute carries. Okay, we will now move to papers for referral, and the clerk has very graciously invited Birthday Boone to. I'm glad to see the tradition return. Councilmember Boone.
Thank you so much. Wow, exciting. Elms ID number 38814. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2026 budget in the amount of $43,707.54 to appropriate all remaining unused funds allocated pursuant to the fiscal year 2026 budget to the Atlanta Commission on Women's Trust Fund and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38814 will be referred to the FEC.
Elms ID number 38809. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, authorizing the city attorney on her or her designate to execute settlement statement on behalf of the City of Atlanta to resolve claims against and Perfle, P-E-R-F-L-U-O-R-R-O-C-T-A-N-E, Sulfonic Manufacturing C3M Company in the amount of $1,452,768.03 and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38809 will be referred to the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Winston.
Thank you. I have two items. The first is Elms ID 38736. A resolution by Councilmember Jason Winston, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Atlanta on behalf of the mayor's Office of Communication and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia by, and on behalf of Georgia State University for the operation of the City of Atlanta's Community Access Media, including Channel 24 digital channels and other educational programs for a term of three years to be paid for by the city in an amount not to exceed $590,000.01 for the first five years, and in an amount not to exceed $500,000.01 in each of the second and third years of the term respectively, and a one-time payment during the three-year term of up to 40% of the City of Atlanta's PEG funds due under its Cable Franchise Agreement for capital upgrades to the locations for education, training, and production, including to space, including to space to be provided by the City of Atlanta at 2P Street, Street Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30303. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38736 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Elms ID 38737. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston to establish the Community Access Media Board in accordance with the section number listed of the City of Atlanta's charter, which shall provide oversight, guidance, and public accountability for the city's community media services, including but not limited to public, educational, and governmental access to amend Charter 2, Article 9, Executive Branch Offices, Section Number listed of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances to provide that the Office of Communications shall serve as the liaison to the Community Access Media Board to amend Chapter 34 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to create a new section listed to codify provisions related to the establishment of the Community Access Media Board and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38737 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wes Moreland.
Elms ID 3885, 38805. Resolution by Wes Moreland, authorizing a donation to the Atlanta Regional Collaborative for Health Development to support emergency home repairs for legacy reticents in order to prevent displacement and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38805 will be referred to the CDHS Committee. Councilmember Shook.
Thank you. Elms 38801. An ordinance by Shook to ratify Mayor Dickens' executive order directing at the Chief of Police, the Commissioners of City Planning, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Film Entertainment Nightlife, Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, Chief of Staff, Commissioner of Parks and Rec, Director of the Mayor's Office of Special Events, except no new applications for permits related to outdoor vending on public or private property, permits for activities which may impede upon the right-of-way or require closures thereof, and permits to authorize the conduct of large gatherings and outdoor festivals where such permitted activity shall occur from June 11th to July 19th of 2026, which is the FIFA operational period within the area designated in this order for the purpose of providing for adequate strategic planning by the City of Atlanta and other public and private entities integral to the successful hosting of the FIFA World Cup 26. Directing at the Chief of Staff, Commissioner of Parks and Rec, and Director of the Mayor's Office of Special Events shall temporarily require the submission of all large gatherings or outdoor festival permits for such outdoor events occurring during FIFA operational periods citywide, no earlier than 150 days prior to such events to ensure an adequate allocation of public safety and other city resources, and providing for exceptions for assemblies for certain outdoor events with priority establish, priority status established by city ordinance and for street, sidewalk, and right-of-way closures which shall be necessary due to emergencies and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38801 will be referred to the FEC.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Overstreet.
Thank you, President Shipman. Elms ID number 38807. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, authorizing the City of Atlanta to apply for and accept grant from, accept a grant from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount ranging from $1 million to $3 million with an opportunity to be awarded funds which may exceed this amount for the purpose of funding the opening and improvement of Falling Water Park and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38807 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID number 38806. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet designating the Utoy Creek Watershed lying within the city limits, City of Atlanta, as the Utoy Creek Urban Forest, designating all city-owned property within the Utoy Creek Urban Forest Boundary, including not to, but not limited to Cascade Springs Nature Preserve, Lionel Hampton Beecher Hills Nature Preserve, Deangines, Deangines Greenway, Herbert Green Senior Nature Preserve, Outdoor Activity and Falling Water Nature Preserve as the Utoy Creek Urban Forest Natural Area. Requesting the mayor or his designate, the Departments of Parks and Recreation, Watership Management, City Planning, and Mayor's Office of Sustainability to take whatever action shall be necessary to implement the urban forest and urban forest natural area designation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38806 will be jointly referred to the CUC and CDHS Committees.
Okay. Elms ID number 38741. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an intergovernmental light agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and cost for compliance with the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act and the operation, repair, and maintenance of the light system, including but not limited to damages, replacements of lamps, ballast, luminaires, structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring, service equipment of the lighting system installed in the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the State Route 154, State Route 166, and I-85 to 1, I-285 lighting project as shown in Exhibit A and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38741 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID number 38802. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute sole source agreement, SSP, PS, DHR 2508-1260048, telehealth kiosk with Onmed pursuant to Section 2-1191 of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances on behalf of the City of, on behalf of the Department of Human Resources and a term of three years with zero renewal option in an amount not to exceed $2,520,000.01. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and amount numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38802 will be referred to the FEC.
All right. Elms ID number 38800. An ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute Amendment Number 42, Agreement IFB-C-1210246 Cascade Road Avenue Streetscape and Signal Installation with Matthews Kelly JV on behalf of the Department of Transportation to add funding for continued construction of the Cascade Road Complete Streets Phase 1 in the amount not to exceed $4,665,800.01 to waive Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 7, Section 2-1292E, and Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 4, Section 2-1187 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from Fund Department Organization and amount numbers, account numbers listed herein and for other purpose.
Elms ID 38800 will be referred to the Transportation Committee. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, President Shipman. Elms ID 38795. An ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, authorizing the abandonment of a portion of St. John's Circle Southwest consisting of approximately 0.261 acres and being more specifically described in the attached Exhibit A, lying and being in Land Lot 90 of the 14th District, Forza County, Georgia, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute a quick claim. designate to execute a quick claim deed for such an abandonment right-of-way and any other documents necessary to execute the abandonment to Fulton County, City of Atlanta, Land Bank Authority Incorporated, DBA, Metro Atlanta Land Bank, MALB waiving certain provisions of the Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38795 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 38811. An ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Byron Amos, Councilmember Andrea Boone. An ordinance to establish residence utilization requirements on publicly-funded construction and demolition rehabilitation projects to require that at least 51% of workforce hours uncovered projects be performed by bona fide City of Atlanta residents to authorize the Office of Contract Compliance to administer, monitoring, and enforce such requirements to create a workforce training fund and prescribe contributions for shortfalls and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38811 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is Elms ID 38780. Resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis to authorize the City of Atlanta to make a donation to Agape Community Center, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization for the provision of youth and family support services in the amount of $50,000.00 pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38780 will be referred to the FEC.
Next and final item is Elms ID 38799. An ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis. An ordinance for a special use permit for a community center pursuant to section number listed for property located at 2345 Donnelly-Hollowell Parkway Northwest pursuant to Section 1606A0051D for property located at 2345 Donnelly-Hollowell Parkway Northwest, beginning at the northeasterly corner of Donnelly-Hollowell Parkway and North Grand Avenue and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38799 will be referred to the Zoning Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. But these papers that have been assigned to me, I'm not familiar with. I'm not going to be introducing them. They seem like they should probably go to the district person.
Thank you. Elms ID 38796. An ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to provide for the annexation of property located at 942 Gresham Avenue, Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30316 into the corporate limits of the City of Atlanta, Georgia pursuant to the 100% method to extend the boundaries of the Atlanta Independent School System to notify the Department of Community Affairs of the State of Georgia of such annexation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38796 will be referred to the FEC.
Elms ID 38797. An ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to zone property located at 942 Gresham Avenue, Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30316 to the R4 Single Family Residential Zoning District and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38797 will be referred to the Zoning Committee.
Elms ID 38798. An ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to amend the land use element of the 2021 City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to designate property located at 942 Gresham Avenue, Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia 30316 to the medium lot, single-family land use designation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38798 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elms ID 38810. A resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $60,000.00 to the Cabbage Town Initiative Community Development Corporation to restore and improve the Crook Street Micro Mobility Hub and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38810 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Sir, Mr. President, Elms ID 38803. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to amend Concessions Lease Agreement listed Concessions Package 2 for F1 Concourse B with Delaware North Companies Travel Hospitality Incorporated to incorporate the name change and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38803 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 38804. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to consent to and approve the assignment of Concessions Lease Agreement listed Concessions Package 2 F1 Concourse B with Travel Hospitality Services LLC to Arenas USA, Inc. and for other purpose.
Elms ID 38804 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Just have two quick ones. Elms ID number 38812. An ordinance by Councilmember Ishay Collins authorizing a donation in the amount not to exceed $5,000, $5,000.00 from the Post 3 at Large Carry Forward Account to the Atlanta Preservation Center for the Herden Home Museum Restoration Project to Section 36-306 of the City of Atlanta's charters and charter and other purposes.
Elms ID 38812 will be referred to the FEC.
Okay. Elms ID number 38813. An ordinance by Ishay Collins authorizing a donation in the amount not to exceed $2,500.00 from the Post 3 at Large Carry Forward Account to Morris Brown College pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38813 will be referred to the FEC Committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shook.
All right, thank you. Elms 38815. Resolution by Shook authorizing the mayor's designate on behalf of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with the Garden Hills Civic Association, Inc., authorizing the permanent installation of a centennial post clock on and/or in the traffic circle at Bowling Road, Pine Tree Drive, and Remsen Road in the right-of-way located in the specific addresses listed and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38815 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Any other papers for referral today? Seeing none, we will move to general remarks of the body. Any general remarks before we conclude? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are several events taking place this week that I'd like to highlight. I don't know if anyone noticed how I am quaffed today, but blue is the color of prostate cancer awareness. September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and there will be a September to Remember Our Brothers Keeper Get Screened Event, September the 18th, 2025, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Russell Innovation Center for Entrepreneurship, the Rice Center at 504 Fair Street Northwest on the 18th. It's free to the public. There'll be early detection screenings, STI screenings, blood pressure, hepatitis C, glucose screenings for participants, and there's also a giveaway to potentially get free tickets to see Chris Brown and Charlie Wilson. So that's a plus. Also on that date, on Thursday, September the 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the CT Barton Recreation Center, WorkSource Atlanta will be conducting a Career and Resource Fair for the community. You'll be able to meet industry representatives and talk about employer benefits, engage in connections with employers, and there will be hiring onsite for open positions. And again, that will be at the CT Barton Recreation Center this Thursday, September the 18th, at 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. But as they say in late-night television, but wait, there's more. I have one more. Let's see. On this Wednesday, the ATL Fresh and Free Drive-Thru Food Distribution will recommence at the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church at 816 Maynard Terrace Boulevard, 30316 this Wednesday, September the 17th at 2:00 p.m. So we'll be with our regular community partners. At our last event, we had over 700 cars waiting. And so you would think that the need would go away, but it seems to be growing. We encourage people to be there on time, and we will distribute the food and food boxes while supplies last. And again, that will be at the Mount Pleasant Baptist Church located at 816 Maynard Terrace Boulevard this Wednesday, September the 17th, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. sharp. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So want to go through a few events we have in District 12 coming up. This Saturday, we're gonna have, we'll be hosting the Jazz Fest at Pittsburgh Yards. Actually, the Pittsburgh Nia Jazz Fest will be hosted on Saturday, September 20th. It will start at 1:00 p.m. It will go into 7:30 p.m. So super excited to bring that back to Pittsburgh Yards. It's the only one that's actually hosted at the Pittsburgh Yards Field. The second event I want to make sure I invite folks out to is next week on Sunday, Sunday, September 27th. We're going to be hosting a Lifeline event in which all of your pets, you can come over and get your shots for your pets. It's going to be hosted at Atlanta Metropolitan State College. It's going to be Sunday, September 27th, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. One more event we're going to be hosting in District 12 this month will be... But wait, there's more. The Adair Park Porches and Pies. It will also be hosted Sunday, September 27th. So right after you leave Atlanta Metropolitan State College getting your dog or your cat taken care of, please come on over to Adair Park 2, and we're going to be hosting our Porches and Pies event, a citywide famous event. So thank you, President. And also, lastly, want to wish Councilmember Boone happy birthday, but tomorrow I want to wish my wife, Ashley Fogel Lewis, a happy birthday. So thank you. Happy birthday. I look forward to enjoying the festivities.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to wish my mother-in-law, Deb, a happy birthday, and also to say happy anniversary to my wonderful partner, Sarah. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, Mr. President. It would be remiss if I did not wish Ms. Catherine Brown of the Harville Homes community a 104 happy birthday. So definitely want to stop on behalf of the city to wish that young lady a happy birthday, Ms. Catherine over in Harville Homes. So thank you.
Thank you. Two quick announcements for me. One, just a reminder, October 6th is the last day to register to vote for the November 4th municipal election. Remember that redistricting changes will go into effect for the November election. Fulton County has mailed out updated voter registration calls to all impacted citizens late last year. If you have any questions about your district or your voting location, visit MVP.sos.ga.gov or call the Municipal Clerk's Office of the City of Atlanta for assistance. And second, just wanted to wish the Atlanta Dream all luck on their playoff run. They won their first game against the Indiana Fever, and they'll be playing tomorrow night at 7:30 in Indiana. Go Dream. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the ending roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large. Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post 3 at Large. Councilmember Jason A. Winton, District 1. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District 3. Councilmember Jason Dozer, District 4. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District 5. Councilmember Alex Wan, District 6. Alex Wan. Councilmember Howard Shook, District 7. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District 8. Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District 9. Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District 10. Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, District 11. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District 12.
Without objection, we stand adjourned.